It's now 6:00 P.M. on April 11, 2022. The City Council Work Session will now come to order. Please join me in the rise of the pledge of allegiance. Patty, will you please call the board?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Jolie Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
And City Attorney Andrew Sosman.
Here.
Thank you, Patty. Before we get started, this is a pretty aggressive agenda. We have a lot of items to cover, but I also know that after so long, we tend to rush things, get ill, don't want to work any longer. I'm going to ask if this council will agree that we end this meeting at 9:00 P.M. and there's a good possibility we may get through this, but if we don't, then we've scheduled a second meeting later in the month. Everybody okay with that? Good?
Absolutely.
Great, great. All right, one other thing. I noticed that I added an item number nine on the agenda, and it's so very close to item two. I would like to just remove item nine or roll it into item two. If that's okay. Am I good with that?
Yes.
Okay, let's get started. Review city code, section 94. This is item one. Reviewed city code, section 94 zoning and ordinance 2201. Add this item to the agenda.
Item.
Would you like to go ahead and explain it?
Yes, this is the last of the sections that the planning review board, they went through the code. It's got a couple other items in there that have been brought up in council meeting and the Citizens Advisory Board. There's a section in there. And I'll just kind of go through the highlight. All the work, items in red. Brett did this for us before he finished it at the end of February. And I had Andy look at it also. And so we're pretty comfortable with what's in there. Some of the highlights, the, there was in red, there's a definition of a manufactured building. The planning review, planning board recommended that be added to this. So that's in there. If you go to page eight, the planning board talked about artificial turf and synthetic grass. We came up with a definition of that. It allows up to 50% of the front yard to be an artificial turf. Currently, you can do that in your backyard, but not in the front yard. Ask the front owners.
I was just curious, was any of this information, like already done somewhere else, that we just incorporated it?
It was, Brett and I went through this, and we found a couple other cities that had it. And the stipulations that were in it, basically, for the artificial grass was it needed to be at least one and a half inches tall. Artificial turf did. And should have a turf, a minimum of 15 to 16 ounces. And a permanent building of 30 inches. So all this stuff was added into the ordinance to make it feasible.
Is this a new addition on your part?
Yeah.
Going to control it?
Yeah. And what it was about, we've got a few yards that have put artificial turf in and realized that there's an ordinance, not in the whole front yard, patches like which one. Across the street from where Jolie lives, there's one on Denado, kind of catty corner where Glenn lives. And another man came in and he was going to put his whole front yard in. We had to tell him, no, you can't do that. So he went around the city saying, well, that's got a piece in it. He's come out, that's got a piece. So the planning board looked at it and said, well, maybe we are creating a definition and create an opportunity for people to put it in if they want to. And in most research that we did, only, they would only allow 50% of the front yards. So everything else had to be regular landscape. So that's.
Are we going to go over this, like you said, in detail? Or are we just, we're?
Yeah, I'm just going to go into the high.
Seriously, it's a high-level overview.
So now we're going to.
We have, she goes, it was entered by city manager.
Yeah, we'll just go over the highlights and then we can take.
Okay.
And then there was a couple comments about making sure the strategic plan is annotated in this section of the code. And the free board requirement, that was added into the section of code about building specifications on page 14. On page 16, parking them a boat for 24 hours just to verify in the city that they're in a door for worship. Previously, we, and it's still there, we do have with a permit, it can exceed 24 hours to 72 hours and get a permit to leave a boat to a private driveway. But a resident brought this up, and Councilmember Bankard brought this forward for me. And so we just added that headed in here. And then really the last thing of any major ordinance was the issue with backyards of large properties on page 17. The Citizens Advisory Board looked at this and kind of came up with a trade-off that said currently you can go to five foot, up to five foot in the seawall. You can be six foot in height or eight foot for edge. They looked at moving them back to 12 feet from the seawalls. So there was an individual team. Actually, they came to the council meeting and told our citizens advisory to go with that. Just on page 20, there's a, we added including moving vans and moving trailers. It's a total initial set of pods. I want to clarify that. So somebody, just moving, they'd be able to get a permit for the city to. So someone took. And that's it. And I put behind that the minutes from Citizens Advisory Board of January 20th and as I before, they recommended moving that back to five feet, except on property moved by the city. For example, next door park, some for the six foot fence up. Next door park, public park. And I gave you a copy of the existing code also. So we can start with questions. So the only changes are correct.
Yes.
Same changes or additions.
So what's the status of this now? Do we have our next board meeting? Will it be on?
What happens? If everything's good with this tonight, then we will convert it into our ordinance and it will be on the next meeting for first review.
Also, we have, Jolie Shirley was actually on the Citizen Advisory Committee discussing this and also Ron Seigman.
He's here tonight.
So if anyone has any questions concerning these items that are listed, here they are. With that being said, should we just start at the top?
Yes.
All right, so we are at item C on page two. Aptly strive to achieve and adhere to the City of Bellarby strategic plans and guiding doctrine for mission, vision, core values and goals. I see no problem with that. I'm wondering where that came from. Anyone?
Planning, the planning. Little vision.
Yep, I like it. Anyone have a differing opinion?
Still.
All right, and we're moving on. All right, so now we're on page four, and this is definition of manufactured building, modular building or factory-built building. It's pretty straightforward. It's just a definition. Assuming this was put in there in the event that we do have a problem with prefab anything that we want to install in Bellarby.
I have a question. Does it, does it? At our condo, several people along the side of the building have those, such as rubber, whatever you want to call them, sheds that they keep their, their, not their surfboard, but their.
Swatches.
Their garden stuff in, their stuff. I mean, are those kind of as a manufactured building or are those an accessory structure?
Yeah, I don't think that that actually falls under this heading just because of its ability to have an internal structure, heating, belay, plumbing, et cetera.
Yeah, I think they're, I think that it's more trying to avoid creature homes.
Yeah, okay.
However.
I think it's just to prevent a crane from coming in and dropping and they were home in place and dusting their hands off.
People have their.
Yeah, I think that falls under sheds, right?
Sheds.
Yeah, does that make any sense? Kind of like an accessory structure.
Right, that would certainly be that.
Yeah. I used to believe that too.
Anyone have any questions about page four and five? Now we are up to, I guess we need to start on page five to understand what it is we're looking at. Landscaping requirements, and then we'll move over to page eight. And there's an addition to the line chief about parking. And I think that this is just following Florida code. Is that correct? I actually took time to read it today. Any objections? Everybody good with that? All right, traffic hazards, it's kind of falls under the same. It's self-explanatory, we're just following state law. All right, now we're down at the bottom of the page. Artificial turf, synthetic grass. This is a long one. We already had a brief description of it. After reading this, I thought that it was reasonable. I thought that it was a reasonable solution. And it sounds like it's, you're not putting quarter inch height pile out there. You're actually putting something that looks like grass in place. Was that the intention?
Yes, it was, so we wouldn't, someone go to Home Depot and buy nor out of garden for a parking.
I mean, I'm agreeing with you, obviously, but not the entire construction just basically, you do that out. And that's the description of the layout and the type of artificial turf used. Is that that?
Beginning with precautions for installation.
Wait, it's Mike. It's not transferring.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, was that her?
No, I think. I'm running this microphone. With VII, I just had a basic question about that one about normally they don't start pounding into tree roots. I don't know if that was really a problem. You see?
It can be. You know, I think, just like when you do construction around trees, you have to put a tree barricade up. It's going to be, I would say we probably have the same sort of procedure. So you need to stay off of, you know, stay a distance from the tree, whatever type of tree, like it's different, I think, based on the type of tree.
Yep, and then the next one's fine, that's great. I agree with that, obviously. Where I do come into a problem with this is the locations allowed. I was kind of confused reading it, hearing your description that you can install it in the back. It's the front that you're coming under the limitations. Okay, that's why the section in there about paper blocks. Biggest problem I do have is number four, existing artificial turf. That tells you if you've got it installed right now, 10 years, it's gone. Your investment, 15, $20,000, gone to replace by sod. I mean, possible?
You're not even, you're even.
You know, yeah. What that paragraph lacks though is it doesn't tell you what must be meant now. I mean, it's just magic wand, whatever you got in there, it's a bacteria in it. But it doesn't say, hey, you know, you still have to be the fade stuff or whatever. I mean, that's what's kind of lacking in that paragraph. I agree with that, hey, you know, your grandfather in, but there is a minimum, minimum standard like, hey, if it's faded now, it doesn't mean you don't have to replace it. So.
Yeah, I.
I guess a minimum requirement. I also, I had a question. If you go back to the top, I'm looking at page nine at the very top there. You use the term building official, but I don't see it in the definitions there. So I don't know if it's colored someplace else or maybe I missed it, but I looked back for a building official and I didn't see a definition of who's the building official. I've never seen a one and a half inch pile, so I guess I'm. Probability and stuff all makes sense to me, the fade.
How about my house? I'll show you.
Oh, Dave, okay.
I have some blowers, two of them. One I have plenty of itself. That's really zero, but the standard inch and a half. And it's funny, it's much longer before you can install it. Three, once you finish filling it, because most of it's, it comes down to the grass portion relative to the wall.
Okay, so that, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And so while you're on that section, are they going to do a densification test? Since this has a permit, I mean, what's the, I don't know. See, it's already, it's already great. We're going to put this on concrete or something like that. It's, it's going to pile up wood.
Well, I got a problem mine, the previous one, I need a lot.
Well, that's a good point.
Yeah. So I, I.
So you put it on the turf as well anymore?
But it's.
Yeah, well, I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, densification test or something like that. So what happens with you?
My backyard floods.
I sort of get, that's where I'm getting at.
I didn't spell pumps, but it's also a purpose of the other three buildings around that go higher in the range on the property.
Yeah. What about your neighbors? Does it run off of your neighbor or?
It runs off of the meat, unfortunately, a lot. Yeah, and then I, it's got to put drainage systems in. So it runs off, the turf into the drainage, it's pumped through the tubes all the way into the front yard.
So whatever you're putting this stuff over, you're kind of stuck with the ground's ability to absorb the water.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. Because they, they put it on blacktop or asphalt. It's just, it's just going to puddle, and most of it is a shell.
Well, my question is, is what's the difference?
How much it's already.
I'm saying if it just left, you didn't put any artificial grass on top of it, it's still the same condition.
Still, you still.
Still asphalt.
You still have the same condition. That's, that's why I'm asking the question is, are you changing the dynamic of the property's ability to absorb water? Or are you just, now you have wet grass? I, you know, I don't know. I'm trying to.
Yeah, everything we did, we see investigations looked into it. It's the grass itself that's permeable, because what we're using doesn't seal it. Because you don't want water pulling up on that, because the layers, we're actually putting sand into the rug. And they forgot, part of the day, they load the sand into it and then rush it, continue to freshen it in. It pulls the sod down and you want it to turn a little bit because you want the sand to wash away the other location, allowing the turf to pop that up. Again, you don't just throw down a carpet on D. But you really got to find the recordable devices on traffic to install it. It's not cheap. The inkhead.
So going back to what Mr. Bankard, Bankard brought up, do we force people to change what they already have? Beyond ensuring that this stuff is permeable, is there anything else we should, we should make the homeowner do?
We, we said, you know, the previous owner put it down. What, what was the blacktop like? Was it all cracked?
No, it was funny, it's my property.
I remember, I don't mean the pickaxe.
No, 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 no. Yeah, this is really, this guy was, it's an interesting idea. You look at it and it's gravel. And then obviously we got the paved driveway, et cetera. But on the gravel section, scrape away the gravel to a depth of about three inches. And I put more gravel on top. And you'll see a layer of asphalt that's been placed to dig. I have to dig through, crack it with a pickaxe to get down beneath that. So any water that does come in, it's probably not absorbed in the ground. It's sent via the level to the front or it pulls in the back of the yard. He did that for basically weeds, weaker form.
But wasn't that the way they installed all those gravel yards back in the 70s? So I think that was just.
No.
Decided it's not.
I wish, I wish a few, few yards in the city would gravel on the top of them. It's asphalt companies.
That's how they installed it back then. That was the typical installation.
Very old yards. They, they asphalted them. And then they put pea gravel.
Yeah.
Is that, when they asphalt, is that like a one inch thick layer of asphalt which was real porous, you know what I'm saying?
There's no rebar. I mean, I.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, sometimes when you only put the one inch down, it's very porous and will, and will add like, yeah, it'll suck up.
Whatever it is, it's been grandfathered in. We can't change it. I mean, and that's typical throughout Pasco, Penales counties. Yard after yard has that material in it. And it's just, Northerners buying these second homes did not want maintenance, did not put grass in the yard. That's just the way it was, and we can't change that. So this isn't going to affect that. I mean, this is, this, we do have a provision in here. Item B, it says proper drainage shall be provided for all artificial turf installation. And they got to get a permit. So I think it's going to be on a case by case. It's going to be up to Kyle, who's going to review those permits as they're submitted, to make sure that they're providing the proper drainage.
Proper drainage is on the solid basis as well. At least it should be.
Yeah, you're not supposed to dump green, John.
They rely on that.
Yeah. My swim before.
All right.
Okay, I understand that in section four.
Any other questions about this particular section? Everybody okay with it?
I think back to Glenn's original question.
Oh, yes.
Are we allowing a grandfather clause for those that have it? Because maybe they're not exactly these specifications at this point. We must have something like that happen to it.
I've heard of grandfather clause.
I agree with the grandfather. I've got no problem, but it doesn't state needing a certain minimum now. I mean, if you were to drive by and it's been there for five years, I got no problem, but if it's faded and hatched or whatever.
What's, what's the legal answer?
You do have, I mean, in essence, four is your grandfather clause. You're telling them they have 10 years on the date that you enacted. Or like anything else, if they're doing more than 50%, then they have to come into compliance with the ordinance. As if, you know, as if anything grandfathered in the home. So you do have that provision in.
So they have meeting phase requirements too?
Within, if, if they're currently, if they're not in compliance, they have basically, if it's fading, they have 10 years, unless they're, unless they're replacing 150%. Then they have to do it immediately.
I always want to thought, when I look at 50%, it maybe unfairly targets ranch homes, vice, multi-story houses. Because you subtract the square, round footage of the home. For example, two houses on my property, I got a half acre. If I have a double story, my footprint is less. That allows me to put more turf. If I got the ranch home, which I do, which takes up much, and it's almost twice the area, I.
Mr. Zabel, is your microphone?
No.
No. Thank you. No, thank, no, appreciate that. Thank you. But double the area, now they got a ranch home, my ability to put sod is much less.
Well, remember, the, the reason you're, if you pass this ordinance, the idea is for everybody to come into compliance with this new standard that you have. And the fact of the matter is, is that a lot of those properties you're talking about may have not, or probably didn't do it properly to begin with. So you're giving them a 10-year break to come into compliance after they've done something, either without a permit or improperly. So they're, from a legal standpoint, I think you're, you're okay with enacting something like this. In fact, you're, you're being more than fair when giving people 10 years from that time period. Now, the only people that you really have to worry about are those people that sell their property in nine and a half years and the people that don't know when they buy it, that they have to come into compliance. But other than that.
No, I agree with that because especially the last 10 years, the technology has come from Walmart grass carpet to almost every NFL stadium that's running what they call field turf. And that's expensive stuff and it's amazing. So I agree. Thank you.
I do have another question.
On page nine, the proper drainage shall be provided for all artificial turf installations to prevent excess route of polluted water. Is there a conflict there with any discussion we just had previously? So in other words, a guy has an old grandfather gravel on top of asphalt, and he wants to now scrape off the gravel, just lay artificial turf over there. He has an old pollution problem.
He's good. I think he's good.
He's good?
I think he's good, because I don't think the, the turf grass impacted anything. It was already bad. It was already impermeable. So he, he or she didn't do anything to make it worse.
Yeah. That's, that was my, my situation. It, the only reason it didn't get worse is at the same time we put in the drainage system.
Right. And you made it better.
Yeah, if anything, it causes to improve the property, but it was, it was bad to begin with.
But, but I think that getting a permit is going to require them to dig up that asphalt and install it properly.
No, usually they install properly over what's there, because they will put the ground, they put the underland in the gravel, then the topsoil, and that's contacted, and then the turf and the sand brushed in.
And the artificial turf will meet the permeability restrictions that were identified in this already. So when you buy it, they're going to say that this is our permeability.
I get it. You're saying it's not the artificial turf that's causing the.
Right. It's your property.
Yeah, it's already a problem to begin with.
I buy that.
And then it goes back to old code and old specifications that have never passed today's standard. But just because they're wanting to change the color of their lawn or, or get away from watering and things like that, I don't think it's.
For some people, they're allergic to grass.
Right. Wouldn't we sit and smack people for trying to inherit their homes?
Well, you just want to have an issue of color. Smurf turf. Well, if somebody wants to put purple on his.
Yeah, I don't have an answer on that one.
Green, white, black, individual bladed grass. Top, top of page nine.
And bottom of page nine, all artificial turf shall be maintained in a green, faithless condition. Thank you.
What did you mean?
Smurf turf. Well, no, I mean, you get, you get shot. Some people will, sports team, colors.
I hope they always do. It brings a good football.
I do know a lady that lives in Bellarby that absolutely would have purple grass if she could. I'm not saying that that's, that should ever pass, but.
That's what I'm concerned about.
We do see multiple color gravel something. I've seen purple gravel in the yard. But I do have a question about the 50% in the front. So when I read that, you know, it's 100% on both sides and 100% in the back. Why did it ever get started that this, somebody would say only 50% in the front?
Well, in most areas that we did research on, they wanted to limit it to make them not, just make it in the front yard a, like the back yard. They, they wanted, most cities said, you've got to put some landscaping in the front of your yard.
And shrubs or something. Normally when you'll see it, you see it in the front, and then behind it, closer to the house, you'll see shrubs or.
Trees or bushes or landscaping.
So it's fifty percent of the overall square footage, which I'm not very unionized. And, and what would be defined as the front yard, so it's open to twenty...
Not a driveway, only in your property.
Your property, okay. So like you just mentioned, so any shrubs or palm trees or anything that's subtracting from the overall square footage.
Right.
And your driveway.
That's fifty percent. You're good to go on your driveway?
Right.
Okay, good.
Any other questions about this section? We'll move on.
General Holland?
Sure.
It's great seeing the height, you know, the changes in the red, identify, I mean, that has to be a standard of practice. Because I mean, there's other documents in here, we've seen it all before. You're going to sit there and read it, the whole entire document, and try to figure out what's changed. That's great standard of practice.
Absolutely. Yeah, we had it, you know, with the standard, uh, marking. Said, well, take it all red, it's being changed. Much easier to read. Okay, page eleven, let's see. Two dash two sixty-two reference. How did that come about? Was it incorrect before? Or did it change? No, it was just updating something that was not properly. Further down, page eleven, number seven, such variance is not in conflict with the city of R B's strategic plan. Like it already?
Yes.
We are on page thirteen. Implementation. Purpose of determining plant species to remove. Refer to the most current edition of the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Noxious Weeds Rule. Chapter five B dash fifty-seven F A C. This gives us a guide. I like it. We didn't want to lose five hundred plants. We just want to use something that's already been created. And that came from plant number B. I'm curious, how many, how many varieties are on the list today? Today, I couldn't tell you if it's over or not. If I remember right. Let's get rid of our pepper plants. Peppers were already in there. So many peppers were already in there because it's considered grass. And our code says our grass can only be seven inches tall. So, remember. So that's why we went around to a lot of these lots, and you've seen over the last couple of years. We've told them, they gotta remove them or cut them to seven inches. Right. It's, it's perfect. It's always nice to have an out of reference. That, okay, this is our list, and we don't maintain it, but we, but we abide by it.
For the material.
Now, we are on page fourteen. And that's just to make it consistent with the building code. There's one foot of three foot, four foot. Which that means that if your B F E is eight, and your building, your home structure, it has to be one foot above that. Questions about that one?
One foot's a lot. One foot is a lot.
Some cities have three.
Is it, is it twelve inches or eighteen? The one foot, eighteen inches.
One foot. A freeway.
So the code is one foot.
Well, no, the four building code is one foot. It's a new follow-up before I... Do you have any concerns with it?
No, it's not. Just help me with some of these announcements. I don't like the three-story parking area anymore, so.
Oh, I, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
All right, now we are on page sixteen. And this is dealing with the parking codes. Our, our current code only allows for seventy-two hours. Okay. And what was brought up, and House Minister Branca brought this up. I wanted to change the code to allow a boat to be brought in as long as they notified the city. They could leave it overnight to get ready for going out the next day. Previous, and, and we still left the twenty-four to seventy-two hours, you gotta come to it. Okay. I have a little bit of a problem with this, and not necessarily the time, but maybe, I'm just not sure if this is going to encourage people with large boats pulled behind large trucks going to their circular driveways that they can't fit. I just want to make sure that if we do this, I mean, it's really not a big deal, but we need to actively monitor boats sticking out in the street while they're home for the night, just to make sure that, that we don't have a problem. And I only bring this up because there was one on Bay Shore. It was parked out there for, it was only one night, but no lights. There weren't really many reflectors in a corner of it was sticking right out. And I thought, some kid comes through here going too fast, he might flip it. Isn't that covered? You can't be out in the street, it'll, it can exceed your driveway limits.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
I'm sure it is. I guess the point I'm making is whenever they call in or they receive a permit, maybe we give them something that says, here's the rule sign here. To make sure that they'll...
When you brought that up, currently, the guys just have to call right now to get the permit? They can be emailed?
Well, yeah, they, they can, we can email the permit to them, but that's for seventy-two hours. That's, permit is good. That's something that is favorable for a boat. What this was, individual came to a constabulary, I think he talked to you, Branca. He brought up that I want to take my boat out tomorrow morning, and I bring it home to charge the battery. It's late at night. It's late at night.
He said on high and dry, something like that.
And some, makes sense. And we do get calls from...
And the problem is, not to interrupt you, but the city closes at four thirty, he gets off of work at five o'clock.
Yep.
So he wanted to courtesy, just not him, he has other neighbors too, that say, hey, can I email the city? Can I call the city? Leave a voice message, and the city email him a permit, you know what I'm saying, the next day.
Oh, you don't give them a permit?
This, this, or parking.
The lottery business, they still get permits?
Uh, no, I believe they just get notified, all they do is have to notify in the first twenty-four hours. But then if it's seventy-two hours, they're required to permit.
Yeah, my wrong for the order.
That's that?
My, my wrong for the order permit for the twenty-four hours. Just, he wanted just to notify the city.
Yes.
Okay, you don't understand what you're doing. And I appreciate what you did.
I do have kind of an issue. How do you monitor it? I mean, what is the deal with, you, you get a permit. Bring your trailer home, a little bit of motorcycles to move. I get permit, that's the big deal. I don't understand it. If you don't have a permit, that the city can monitor, how do you monitor the situation? That's where boats all of a sudden will start sitting out in the driveways for weeks or wherever.
Well, I will tell you, there, there's an individual at Twenty Second, and...
Who are you talking about?
And I personally have been to his house several times. Because it's, you know, it's off-hours of the boat enforcement. Somebody calls and says, hey. And he's notorious for not getting anything. And then when you go talk to him, I know, I know. And then he says, well, there's a boat down the street there. And so it's kind of like the law. So how do... I understand that the code says seventy-two hours currently. But how do we, that's, that's what we wonder how. And you can only get three times a calendar year. But the twenty-four hour thing is for someone just to bring it home, get it ready to go out fishing or something, and take it the next day. So at least if they call in, code enforcement would be able to learn that. We would know that there's a boat that's in a house for twenty-four hours. If it's not gone the next day, that's code violation. To the mayor's point here, if they're sticking out, I mean, they should, we should have code enforcement out there, the police, telling them they can't do that. They're obstructing roadway.
Right.
And, and somebody needs to, I mean, like you said, that could be a problem. Or you could give this particular parking rules when they get their permit, so that they know exactly what they're doing. But in the twenty-four hour, I don't know how you do that. The problem with the twenty-four hours is we don't have twenty-four hour code enforcement. And that's where you run into a problem. During the weekend, it's the prime time for abusing the roads. So two nights, nobody's going to tell. Well, no, they do tell. Well, I'm sure they do. You're right.
They used to tell. They're not telling the owners because their name goes on it. That's what, what's going on with the code enforcement statute.
Some people still do tell. But a lot of times now, and just the vice mayor's comment, they have to put their name on it, which now is the law. We, we have, for us to technically investigate a complaint, they have to put their name on it.
Here's the thing, we have provision already that they can do this, for, you know, they can get a permit. I don't know why we need to change it. We already are accommodating people that need to bring their boat up. I don't, and if you're just bringing it home to detail it, we don't do that every weekend. You know, I don't know why we need to change it.
They're doing it because their batteries run down, and you can charge them up. And they all have a charging station or an A C outlet where they park. That's, that's the main issue.
Their batteries are dying because they don't use the boat. I mean, I, I don't mean to be flip about it, but I mean, it would maintain your, it's like saying, you know, I need to...
But if you don't use your boat for a week or two, and you have a drawl when there's battery because you have salt water...
Turn it off when you're not using it.
Well, you might need to do this. I don't know what typical boat will have that they might need to drain it.
I don't know. I think, I think we've got a good code for that, and I think people should get permits. I don't, I don't like this haphazardly parking your vehicle in the driveway. I can tell you on my street, we've got a lot of boat owners, and it would be an issue. And when they're parking a boat in their driveway, there's not enough room for all their kids to park their cars. And then that's going to spill cars out into the road, and it's just, it's, I don't think it's a good plan.
Well, cars shouldn't be out in the road anyway.
Well, but if you have nowhere to park your car because you're at the boat in the driveway, they're going to be in the, they're going to be in the road.
Is it possible to get a permit by email? Yeah, that's, most of the time we'll do it. The way you do it. So, so all it takes is planning. That's it. You plan ahead. Even though it's one day that you need that boat, you're going to get three days. Is that right? You can get up to three, up to three days.
Most of these people, Mr. Mayor, want, want twenty-four hours. They're waiting five o'clock, out, out in the six in the morning.
Yeah, and, and I think the, the point that Vice Mayor Gunn and Councilmember Shirley are making is that we're allowing, we're losing control if we just require a phone call. Because who's to say if they called at all? And how would you know that? We have voice, we have voice mail, right? Right, but...
Well, how does the paper?
They would leave a message on the phone system. I think the bigger issue is our permit may only be issued more than three times a year. That's, would be the bigger issue on my end. If you want to increase that. So, all right, I'm just throwing some hypotheticals out there. Every hyd, I've used two hydros, actually three, I've used three of them. And every one of them had lift service, and they, and there was a place to clean up and a place to flush your engine. The only time that it's not convenient is if you show up at the end of the evening after they're closed. And leave your boat in the water, and, and then it's sitting in the water all night. And then you have to deal with it the next day, or they'll put it up dirty, or you pay to have it flushed. In the case of a trailer, where are they keeping it now?
Well, this is more, you, you have the causeway here, which used to have flushing areas, okay? And the sheriffs had flushing areas, cat dog, because it was a couple fistfights because guys were taking too long to wash the boats. So I don't know where these guys are parking the boats. They may have charging ports, flushing areas, and everything like that. I don't know. This is just for a typical guy who wants to get his boat. Some of these guys say they have their boats five to ten miles away. So rather than getting out of the house, going to get their boat, hooking it up.
It's just, this is a boating community, I mean.
Right.
I'm, I'm sympathetic to, to what they're wanting to do. I just am not sympathetic to...
Yeah, you're a voter, you know better than I do.
I, I mean, I, I know what a pain in the butt it can be. I'm fine.
And a lot of these guys, every one of them will tell you, if you gave me a slip, but there's only so many slips available here, they would get a slip.
I've got no problem if you can monitor this thing and control it. The issue is, I think you're going to lose that by just giving a blanket approval to anybody who wants to pull his boat into his driveway for twenty-four hours. So we've got one person who's saying it's an inconvenience or whatever. When we looked at the stats for code enforcement complaints, the number three issue was parking. Of that, of those complaints for parking, over thirty percent of them was about boats and RVs being parked in people's driveways. So that's a hard and fast statistics, as opposed to one person saying, I'm being inconvenienced. Let's change all the codes so that I can bring my trailer home for one day. Well, I got no problem with that. Why don't we, if it's that big of an issue, why don't we do the same thing we're doing with traffic comp? If there's an issue, go out and get us ten signatures or something. When it's a problem in the city, bring it to the city council. But we've got to get off this one-person call-up and almost, we've got to change the ordinance.
Well, I disagree with the one person. He came to the date, like, he said, I think he speaks for a lot of voters that don't have... I've, I've heard him, and, in fact, I've heard it. So...
If you're fortunate to have a slip, it's not a problem. It's good. People that can't get a slip.
What did it say previously? Because the twenty-four is in red, was there a different number there?
Well, no, it was seventy-two hours. And let's see. Three is what changed, it was modified, so that's why we put it all in red.
Another two, twenty-four is in red.
Right.
Four hours. Did it have a twenty-four?
Before that, there was no twenty-four hour. Says, uh... Just kidding, I do know what it is. So I know it's an inconvenience, and I've had to do it myself. Before I had my boat installed, I was going and getting my boat, playing all day, grabbing it at the boat ramp. Rather than taking it all the way across town, I'd pull in the driveway, do a quick engine flush in the, out, to get the salt out of the engine. Okay? And rinse the thing off, and then take it out before dark. And that's, that's what I did. I don't recall having the boat in my yard all night long. And I also remembered about the neighbors complaining about another neighbor whose boat, as you refer to, is, is out there all the time. I don't have a problem with someone keeping their boat in their driveway for one night or a couple of nights, provided that there's some control. And I think that really, we'd be better off using the same system that we're currently using. If that's, if we're able to obtain a permit through email, we make it, it, it just requires a little bit of planning. On Friday, you should be able to, is it a manual process? I'm assuming it is. You request by email, and then you get something back. Yeah, what the, the previous code said, the temporary parking of boat in a residence with engine driveways shall be permitted for a period not to exceed forty-eight hours. Well, when it's twenty-four, we increased it to seventy-two, or that's what was submitted to the attorney. For the purpose of washing, cleaning, and detailing the vessel, provided that the owner first obtained a permit...
For the purpose of washing, cleaning and detailing the vessel, provided that the owner first obtained a permit and it's displayed on the boat, the permit, uh, currently the code says, and it still says that, it can only be issued three times a year. That's what it says. Making repairs, it's prohibited. Everything else is the same.
Okay.
So, you know, if you want to leave it the way it is and you're concerned that somebody can't bring it over three times a year, maybe the solution is...
Is that the number of times?
Increase the number of times.
Maybe make it six times a year.
Because I live on my boat in summer. In the winter, I don't touch it. So, um, they're all valid points. I, I don't, I'm open to...
Would it alter changes 48 to 72?
I don't think...
I don't, I don't really think, I don't think you want to leave a boat at 72 hours.
No, that's true.
Leave it in 48 and increase the number of times a year and they have to get from the guardrail.
And they have to email. And then email returns, here's your list of instructions and rules.
Right, what's a reasonable number of times?
They get a placard that they stick on the boat. So, if an officer goes by our code enforcement and sees it, then if, or if we get a phone call and somebody says, well, they got a boat in their driveway that's been there for overnight. And I will tell you, the one I spoke about, you know, we've had to go visit, I had general concern.
Well, his isn't even in his driveway most of the time.
Yeah, but that's probably, but we do get a lot of calls. Just last week, we had calls about boats and when I drove the city, we probably had, uh, I think for one day, I had three or four. Well, what's a reasonable? Three times is not enough?
How many times would you, as, as a voter, typically want to leave your boat overnight if you didn't have your rights?
Well, what I was doing was, I, it was a different situation, but I'm assuming that everyone was kind of in that situation where they have a place that they're storing their boat. It's not at their house. And it's obviously not somewhere convenient if they're bringing it in and trying to do all this stuff in their house. Whenever I was keeping mine at, at a high drive, they'd just put it on the rack and even after they closed up, I'd stay there working on it, cleaning it, polishing whatever and, uh, and getting it ready to put away. And then I'd snap the cover on it and I'd leave it there. And the next morning, they would just put it away for me. So, unless they're just leaving it in a parking lot, which that's what, if I didn't have the boat load, that's what I'd be doing right now. I'd be leaving my boat in a parking lot and trailering it back and forth because I just refuse to use a hydra. But I would use the thing, I would use it all the time. I put 200 hours on my boat the first year I had than the one that I currently have.
But every time you put it in the water, you don't need to leave it overnight in the driveway? So, eight times a year? I mean, that sounds like a lot to me, but think about the summer months if it's every other weekend.
Maybe you're thinking two big a year, maybe it's like two non-consecutive times in a week. I mean, during the summer months, just like you say, you're gonna be living on your boats. I'm just saying.
Well, you increase it to that and you're gonna have boats all up and down the street all the time, which I think that's what we're trying to prevent.
Twice a month? That's too much.
I think twice a month would be, you know, two nights in any calendar month might be fair. That gives people...
Or maybe we say, just for boats, we go back to your permits for 24 hours, you can do it twice a month.
I would not say, I would not give them a specific number within just to say, well, I have 12 times, I'm leaving it here for two weeks.
Right, right, right.
That's where we run into problems.
You're timed a month for a 24 hour period each, so you're...
You can keep there for...
Not keep there for two days, you know, you're not keeping on.
I think that's why 48 hours is there, is you're leaving it overnight.
Oh, so it's, you don't get two nights out of it, right? Because then...
So, two 48s in a 30 day period, not to be communal with, I mean, you can't bank all these hours. Yeah, save them up, I'm gonna put it there for a month while I paint it.
It's not like the club where you have a bin but you gotta spend over...
Twenty one, twenty one.
Spend it all the first month.
Two, nine consecutive nights in any month. Right?
I'm happy with the way it works right now. The phone call.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, well, you just, you guys just agreed to the last time, that makes sense. Twice, twice a month.
Twice a month, not consecutive.
And maybe think about putting a flushing station down by the way you're parking it.
Was it a page of plate, like, you know, I mean, like a car wash is out, you know? There's one up on the, in Target that has a...
And hopefully that works and if it doesn't, we can address it again, right?
And then still have to get a phone call.
Yes. And, and what that does is that tells the neighbors that you actually took the steps to make it legal and he's not just road like some other agents. Yeah, one of the questions that I have is, I mean, is it, I haven't seen the permit, is it...
It's, no, it's a...
Is this something easily readable from?
Yeah, because you put them in color. It's kind of like what we do with the RVs and make them color and they put them on their boat.
Which means we can't email them back the permit, we'll have to stop, store it up.
I still like the ability to email for the permit. I understand you didn't pick it up, but the issue of that flushing station, taking a look at all the construction installments for the residence's own.
Where, where would you put that at?
I mean, I really don't know. I mean, what I did in the Navy was different from you guys out there, I was talking to the marina.
Yeah, I like that idea.
You'd probably use it, right?
Where are you gonna have a run for it?
I, I don't know. I mean, I, what I did in the Navy was totally different, I'm just throwing that out there.
Some, some, or research.
Certain days that parking lot's pretty full.
Where is that?
Well, I mean, on the weekends.
I know, I've seen it.
No, it's that, two or three times a year, it's maybe become full. Majority of the time, there's nobody in that parking lot.
Now, I still think we need to have a maximum number of days in a year because you might get the guy who just brings his boat home to his neighbor or whatever, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, if you say two times per month, it maximizes 24.
Yeah, but that's a lot of days.
So, you're saying it should be less than 24?
Yeah.
Two times a month?
Yeah, because we're talking about the summer months and then all of a sudden now you've got 24 days instead of, you know...
It's, it's not really 24 days because he's not gonna use that boat at certain times of the year. It's nasty, it's windy, it's cold, it rains.
Also a good time to prepare for summer months.
Install a radio. Is it?
Run their outdoor engine next to your bedroom window. Consequences and things.
All right, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to reach a consensus on this somehow.
Yeah, just, you can't make repairs or things like that.
No, but if you're flushing your engine, I mean, I don't want to hear that every, every other weekend for 12 months.
How long does it take to flush an engine, Lee?
10 minutes, roughly.
Depends on who's flushing it, right?
Depends on who's flushing it and, uh, and also what...
I love the new...
Well, and that's another problem is you're flushing your boat and, you know...
You know, the runoff from an engine flush is nothing compared to an afternoon thunderstorm dropping three inches of rain on your parking lot.
No.
The water that comes out of a, out of an engine whenever you're flushing, you're just getting the salt out of it, but it's, it's not a big deal. But it would, I think the idea of a flushing station, I could see that in the middle of that parking lot where you could have a couple of boats, one on each side, and you have a couple of, uh...
You've got a note to check.
Nozzles and, uh, and I think it would be a great courtesy.
I'll pick on them only, probably, you know, switch that probably.
I've already started calling them under the table.
Right, it's out.
I don't know, switch, but...
I have to tell you what, if we are able to... If we're able to pull that off, I would like to, um, to seriously consider a decal for boats in our community. That way, if the police show up and they see somebody flushing his boat and he doesn't have a, doesn't have a sticker, nope, you're out of here.
I thought we were going, the last council, you actually came up with some time and idea on that for like the dock inspections and everything like that, and we were gonna do boat decal?
I, I know we discussed it, I, I don't.
I don't know how you do it.
No, well, I thought there was something that, that we were running, a decal on a boat, on a beach or something.
No, it was actually, we were talking about putting a, an inspection decal on the dock, not the boat.
Would it be too far a stretch to assume that the vehicle towing the boat would have Miller Beach sticker on it?
No, no, and I'll tell you why, it's because I borrow the company vehicle whenever I'm towing my boat.
This, this isn't something we need to discuss now because we don't have any information on it. So, back to, yeah, back to number three.
Okay, so you feel like 12, uh, 12 months or 24?
Say 16.
Parking nights.
Say 16 maximum.
Split it up. Can we do 12?
Oh, I was gonna say, well, you should, once you're...
Benefit is close to just 12.
No, two per month maximum 12.
19 to 6, 16 maybe, maximum.
I like, I like what Lynn just said, it's, uh, two months, maximum 12 per year.
And 72 or 48 or 24 hours, where do you do those events?
It's, it's one night.
Oh, 48 percent, right. 48 hours.
I'm gonna leave it at 48.
It's 24.
24.
Yeah, 48 per month.
No. Two times per month, maximum 12 and each of those events is 24 hours max.
Yes. Yes, I would say overnight, that's where...
Because you don't wanna mix it like, you don't wanna say...
I brought it in at 11 o'clock one night and I'm gonna keep it till...
One overnight stay. I don't have a problem with someone bringing their boat in, in their own driveway for an hour during the day, doing something to it, fixing a wiring problem and then booting it out of there. I, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I think that the issue is if you want to keep it overnight.
Overnight.
That's the only thing we're gonna...
And check the flushing station again.
Yeah.
All right. Are we in agreement now?
Yes.
How you feel?
Sorry.
Is that right? Okay, so that's 12 times maximum, two times, 12 times maximum per year, two times per month. Is that right? Over, uh, over... One overnight. Each incident is one night overnight. All right.
Yeah.
Right.
It looks like a party in Washington Station all set up.
I'm really glad we're not discussing this in a meeting, a regular meeting.
That's why I wanted, this, this makes it separate because then we'll bring it into you and everyone, you've already discussed it.
Okay, preparing for sailing, that was part of it and, uh, now we are on to fences, walls and hedges. And that's on page 17. And I actually appreciate whoever was responsible for moving the setback for the fence back to 12 feet because many people were complaining about not being able to see, from the seawall back.
The only diff, only thing that's really added is that section that are part of, if you're adjacent to a park or public plant, you can get that fence.
Okay.
Entire one.
Question. When we talk about, um, within 12 feet of the sea, when we talk of property bonded, your boat or your park by any body of water, what if you're on the Gulf? Does the...
You're on the Gulf without a seawall.
So, boundary, I mean, you're counting that as, I guess you're counting that as a seawall, okay?
I think somewhere I thought I read that the body of water was Miller Beach water.
Well, it's not any body of water.
Because it's separately addressed in a coastal, somewhere I read.
Something you really...
No, uh, I don't see it in here.
So, what happens to people that have those hedges above that height, walking back?
What happened then? Well, I guess we'd have to do it if there was a claim about it, we've got to enforce it.
Unfortunately, that's the way a lot of our city code works. It, it relies on complaints to be enforced because we don't want, we don't want anyone just jumping in our backyard and doing random inspections.
So, are these hedges or trees? I think we had this conversation over the next year.
We had that conversation. Several, we had several of these conversations.
The hedges and crutches are things that are closely planted together. Trees are...
So, a gasket of a tree, you know, okay. That's all I can think of.
Because a hedge is considered more like a fence.
Well...
Yes.
The hedge, are we just talking about at the property line or inside? You know, once you're inside the prop, is this only property line we're talking about?
Hedges along the property line. It's like a fence.
Fences, walls and hedges.
Yeah.
Not trees.
Doesn't say, um, so when I have a hedge that's under 6 feet inside the property line, it's a pretty big wall.
Okay. Shall not exceed a height of eight feet in the required side setback area. So, you couldn't have a hedge seven and a half feet away from your neighbor's wall, higher than eight feet. Is that right? We did correct.
Back area, back, yeah. Or is that separate from the water?
Oh, it's 12 foot, 12 foot back. It has to be, well, front of the seawall, it is four foot, okay? From that point on, if it's a hedge, it could be eight foot. If it's a fence, it could be six feet. In the front, it has to be around five and a half to four.
Four feet.
With the exception of fences on adjacent to public property, they can be...
So, the way I'm reading this, if you want to have a 35 foot hedge, as long as it's 12 feet away from the seawall and in my case, seven and a half feet from my neighbor's property, property line.
No, the hedge I can have on the property line.
What's that?
The hedge you can have on the property line, just like a fence.
No, no, what I'm saying is if I want to have this gigantic, more than eight feet, as long as it's between the boundaries of the setbacks, I can have wherever I want.
Pretty much, that's true.
Right? Does anyone have any questions about section 94 dash 251? Am I okay with that?
I think it's 20 is the one.
Thank you so much for making this a grand con. It's, it's helping speed this ride along. So, we're on page 20 now?
Yeah, and all these changes were for is to clarify moving van or moving trailer because in our code, all we previously talked about was portable storage units.
I got one question, as, uh, on my property, still have a travel trailer that I use, but it's behind a six-foot, you know, fence.
No.
That's not considered a moving trailer, that's a travel trailer.
Right, it, it has to be, you can have a trailer behind the fence about.
Supposed to be not visible though. Supposed to be not visible on the fence, right?
Right, yeah, I got about three inches over the top of my fence. He just turned, he out there, he's trying to figure out what the, the intent of this was, it's really primarily moving vans, moving trailers, pods, things that are incidental to a move at the time.
Right, exactly. And they, they get a permit, there's a fee, and, uh, you only get one per every ninety days, and it's good for seven days.
And I, I suspect that someone showed up with a moving van and was parking it in their driveway lot, and so this was happening.
No, what happened was someone had a moving van, they put it in the driveway to move, and somebody questioned, because the code only said pods, didn't say portable storage units.
Okay, the way it's written out in number three, including moving vans, moving trailers on high streets, so somebody's moving out, what happens?
Well, no, they can't put, we, we just added moving vans and moving trailers, they can't leave them parked overnight in the street. That's really what that's for.
So they're using it for, if I got home construction, I'm bringing it in, it's going to be on the street while the moving of goods into it is ongoing. And then as soon as that's done, you gotta pull that trailer out, go to storage, whatever, but it's no longer on the streets.
And this still covers pods.
Right.
Yeah, we, we didn't add a couple people.
For the larger streets. It's on the street, under that section, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so I.
On any street or public right of way, you cannot do that, no matter what.
All right, so a moving man comes in to move me out.
They need to be in your, in your driveway.
What if it's a tractor trailer? Like most of these are, that's, that's my question. He's not there, he's there for, could be there for an hour, could be there for eight hours, depending on how big the house is.
But he's not leaving it there long term like they do.
That doesn't say that, it doesn't say that, it says you're not allowed to be on the street.
Right.
That's my concern.
It's, it's street block inches, that's the issue. Yeah, we need, we'll have to look at that.
Good timing.
Okay, I'm, my sixty.
It'd be, it'd be no, probably no different than a contract that's working on my house.
Oh, yeah.
You're one guy's bringing out of these travel, they're all, they're on the street all the time.
Or you get a shipment of furniture, trucks parked in the middle of the road.
Well, that's another, that's another go.
That's what you see more often.
Yeah.
So if you're moving in and you have moved your entire house in one of these transfer tractor trailers, is it reasonable to expect them to get everything out and off the street before nine o'clock?
They're normally moved because the people there are hourly, so they gotta move their property, which is a tractor trailer, out of there and back to their home locations.
Yeah, they're losing money if they leave that over there.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of what I figured, that I wanted to ask the question.
I actually had this experience in Boston with my daughter, and there was a time limit, to be on the street, I'm trying to remember what the time, there wasn't a lot of time, it was like four hours, I think in Boston, they had to get everything out.
But I think you want to leave it the same timeframe, so.
Those are also smaller domiciles than a four-room ranch house.
Here, right here. Yeah, I think maybe use of like the timeframe that we have for the contractors, it's seven a.m. to six p.m.
We're talking about temporary structures. Is the heading of this section? Why are we even talking about vans and trucks?
Because it says.
Because they're not a temporary structure. Or they're not a temporary structure though.
Well, it's including moving vans and disabilities. Well, we'd have to change the title if we put a different section, so we would have to include, um.
Or just have a second, a separate section for moving vehicles, you know, moving, you know.
Yeah, we were, what we were trying to do is just add something, because we got complaints about, you know, like a U-Haul trailer. Well, it's not a pod, well, it's sort of the same purpose.
It's a pod on wheels.
Right. Well, as Joey said, every week on the street, someone's getting to wash and deliver, dry or, whatever, fresh or whatever.
We get someone who needs it.
There is a different section.
Other home deliveries, I don't know if there's a section like that.
No, there.
Because, yeah, they'll put down basically, you know, you have appliances, dressers, uh, clothing materials. Yeah, uh, put a roof on it. We put a roof on, I mean, I know the guy across the street, the semi was out there on the tractor and was watching it, but it was parked in the road, he had to.
At least you have a place, you know, I mean, back where they drop, they have, they roll around.
But you don't want them on your yard.
Close it down, bro.
You're correct, it doesn't meet the definition of a, of a structure.
No, I, it makes a difference.
It's a different section.
So, all that red's gone.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
So we're basically, we're going to take out the including moving vans and moving trails.
Right. We'll take that out, and we'll put it in a different, it'll end up being a different.
Right, makes sense.
Yes. Are we in a hurry to get this done? This, uh, these changes?
No, we just.
No, I'm, I'm asking, uh, because it looks like we pretty much knocked this out and, um, I guess as long as we get a sneak preview after the edits are made, we can, we can give our own feedback and add it to the agenda.
Well, and remember, Mary, you have two readings, so you're going to have the first reading, and then we can make whatever.
Additional changes.
Council wants before the second, so we can prepare it and make additional changes.
I like it. Also, I would like to thank the Citizen Advisory Committee for your hard work and, uh, making this easy on us, and also the city manager. Lynn Reese.
That was the Planning Review Board?
That was the Citizen Advisory Committee.
But the Planning Review Board.
Right, yeah, that's right.
And we had a couple other things that we brought to the Citizen Advisory Committee.
Several people worked on this, that's, that's nice. Okay. So let's move on to review city manager selection process flow chart. And while we're at it, let's, uh, review the job description for city manager. Vice Mayor Gunn, you added this, unless you take it away?
Yeah, you should all have a hand down here, for those people who are familiar with work breakdowns, this is kind of like a high level warrant, without a lot of detail, you had the initial page in there, and it's been modified somewhat to add some detail to it at the, each, each level there. If you look at the second page, the actual flow chart, you'll see the check mark to, uh, we've already drafted and posted the, uh, the notice for the, the job. There's that arrow there that kind of links it to, uh, the first column on the left there, reviewing to find the job description, we'll get into that in a few minutes. Cause they, they kind of go hand in hand there, because you kind of need to ensure that when these people are filling out their applications and they go to the website to check the job description, the two are kind of aligned there. They're not going to send in an application based on their job posting, only for us to change the, uh, the job description to a previous standard line. So you've got the, uh, the high level blocks there, you've got the planning stage column on the left side, you've got the, uh, the advertisement and posting jobs on the, uh, the application task in the center there, and on the right side, you've got the actual selection task there. In the, uh, you've got kind of like a, a two liner thing, what the high level task is, and in the, uh, the lower, the last line, bottom line, towards the right side, I've tried to kind of identify who has that responsibility for completing that task. Some of them, if you look at the, uh, the middle block on the left side there, reviewing to find the job description, well, that's kind of to be determined, it's kind of at this level, I think, and maybe we bounced it off the Citizens Advisory Committee, but, uh, that's one of the things that needs to be done. If you look at the, the next follow-up pages, for instance, the planning task, I've taken the left column there and broken it down and applied some of the, uh, the embedded tasks in there. We can standardly check some of these things, and at our leisure, we can go back and add things, perhaps when you get a chance in the next couple of days, take it along and see if we've missed some things. I'm trying to just hit the big things that we want to remember, needs to get done. I've, uh, added deadlines in there for some of these things, because I think it's critical, and some of these things must have deadlines on them to ensure that the, the tendencies and sequences are right, and that certain things are going to get done before we open that first application package, before we go to the first decision, uh, block for trying to sort through the applications and decide who we're going to do there. I don't know how much detail you want to go into this thing, or whether you want to just send the guys a whole assignment and discuss it later.
Yeah, briefly, I got, uh, just one quick thing on your selection, selection task, S one, you had initial call of applicants. On the detail, you had CAC and CC, um, and overall, you only had CAC.
Okay, so which one are we talking about?
Uh, this is, uh, you look at your overall, uh, over in the selection tasks, S one.
S one?
You have CAC only, if you go in the detail, uh, in the back, you have CAC and CC.
Okay, so, as I started embedding some of these things here, yeah, I mean, I wasn't, it's not one for one.
Yeah, it's a draft coming up, I understand, no, I, I like the detail and it gives us good, good guidelines.
I think the biggest thing that kind of needs to be done at this point is start filling in the blanks of, say, deadline, when do we want to have some of this stuff done? The one that's really critical is determining the criteria that we're going to use to decide who's going to make it to the shortlist. Because I think we need to get that stuff, we need to have that criteria in our back pocket before we open up the first application package. Because I kind of look at this in terms of how we do contrast and stuff like that, we don't want to, uh, create an opportunity where somebody is going to get selected and somebody else over here is going to say foul, I'm going to file a lawsuit against you because you, you kind of changed the, uh, the criteria later into the thing there. You don't want to open up the application package and start looking at it and say, hey, let's reweight this criteria.
I concur, yeah, uh, one look I would recommend, you have to go basically like a T minus situation here, your drop dead date is that guy's retirement. That being the last one, your final selection, usually has to be at least two weeks prior to that. So we have that on stone, just back that up and then take every step behind that and back them up further.
Well, it's, it's even closer than that, because the applications are due in May twenty-third, right? So before you open those things and start calling the, uh, the stack of applications, I think you're going to want to have some sort of straw man selection process and criteria in your hand before you start opening those packages and start sorting through them, like, this guy is in the, the Bueno pile, or this guy's a definite consideration, or this guy's a baby, you better have an idea of what you're going to be considering and what kind of weight it's going to have.
Concur, but you really got to start at the end, that final date, that everything, you got to back up from there. And that'll tell you what the deadline, look, we need those guidelines probably in the next two weeks.
Yeah.
Selection criteria.
I agree, and I think it's incumbent upon the Citizen Advisory Committee to come up with their criteria, the council to come up with a criteria, and then we kind of blend it to you and come up with, okay, this is, this is the final thing we're going to use.
What kind of salary range are we looking at here?
I think we, we said it's commensurate with experience and potential, I guess.
I understand all that, but I mean.
But it's the base.
Yeah, base.
I think that's going to be determined when we start doing applications and seeing what the requirements are, we don't know.
Well, yeah, but if I'm applying for the job, okay, I would want to know, would you pay? I mean, maybe he'll want to reapply.
Well, I, I. He, he, he might be careful with that sort of thing, because it bit us in the butt once before in the city manager hiring process here. So, you know, we, we, we had some guidelines, and we said, no, this person's out of range, or, or whatever, or you hire somebody, and he's just using it as a placeholder while he's still searching somewhere else. So I think you just kind of need to maintain an open mind on this, and, and maybe it starts with, in the application process, what are your considerations for salary?
Well, yeah, but anyone interviewing for a job doesn't want to throw out a number, because then you're going to say, well, I underbid myself or I overbid myself, okay, so we should say the salary range is between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand a year, okay, depending on qualifications, so you don't have a bunch of applicants saying, I'm going to take a city manager's job, okay, it's a hundred and fifty thousand a year. I want more, you know?
It's pretty typical to have a, a range, a minimum and a maximum.
Yeah, so they have. That's, that's in, do we publish that, or do we just say send resume with salary requirements?
I'd publish that because you want, in some cases, a self-selection criteria imposed prior to entering.
Yes.
That is a self-select, look, I'm not going to do it, or I am, and that calls a lot of your work out. So the ones that are remaining are the ones that are truly interested, and you can spend your time on them constructively.
But are you willing to stretch that number if you see somebody whose application comes in and say, this guy is the best value? Yeah, it's a stretch.
My stretch is already put into that wording, salary commensured upon experience, that's my stretch. And that allows me, within budget guidelines, to maybe exceed, you know, that broad, broad guideline that we put out there. We also have a unique situation here, I don't know how many sandbags that man filled himself on holiday weekends, and this man, I mean, so we're going to need a hands-on, as they say, a hands-on city manager, because he's been out in the, in the shrubs, weed whacking and everything else, how many people are going to actually do this job, okay, that probably think this is a super tight job?
I think you can input that in there, to the board.
We, we, I'm just saying, this is a, there's physical labor to this job.
You think about, okay, there's five employees, okay, you're going to have to do something, you're going to have to work.
Bring him in, and that'll be explained, but he knows it, and he knows, all right, because they do it.
And I think we, we did our best to try to get the point across without saying, okay, you're going to have blisters on your hands, all right?
They might want to put that in the job description.
Say, and the other thing that I think with putting a range in there, you say hundreds of a hundred and fifty thousand, everyone that applies is going to expect a hundred and fifty thousand, so, yes, yes.
Absolutely.
I negotiate every day.
I, I, I try this for the.
I still, I think your first statement, though, I agree with a hundred percent, we should have the salary range, I mean, where I came from, every job, in Swiftmont, had a job description and a salary.
Yeah.
It was already said, so.
You may reach that hundred and fifty thousand right away, you might not reach it for ten years.
So is the place for that in the job description?
Not the job description, I don't think, I think that's.
Well, then you're having their salary.
You should have put that in, because it forces you to periodically reinvestigate the job description just to match the salary according to the CPI. And sometimes it's best to leave those type of details out of the job description.
Yeah, for example, you could, you could go online and check out the Ellis County, every one of their jobs in there, you could look it up and say, here's the job description, and here's the salary range, A to B, that's it, you're going to get paid somewhere in between.
You're self-selecting. People here.
I was going to say, and that language that you referenced earlier, Mike, it said, um, dependent upon, you know, qualifications and experience, et cetera. dependent upon, you know, qualifications and experience, et cetera, but it's still going to be somewhere in that range. But you're also right, Jody, almost everybody, including myself, when I'm going to apply for a position and I saw that range, I'm saying, well, I'm the best there is in the world, so I know I'm going to get that. It's just logic.
And you may get, I mean, the first week, second week, but I mean, when people see Ballard Beach, they may think, oh my God, we're only paying this guy $100,000, it's a high-profile neighborhood. I mean, when I moved in here, I had, this is a real quick story, a sprinkler problem, called the guy up, and he goes, "I can come right out." So what are you charging him? He says, "What do you care, you live in Ballard Beach." So, "Well, thank you, $100,000." I mean, it's the mindset of something.
So what we have currently is salary range and benefits depend upon qualifications, experience, and professional credentials. So we just define a range based upon your experience, and one person's range may be completely different than another person's range. We specifically said range.
I would take out the word range. Everything else is...
It's published, yeah. It's published.
Right. But I think with the job description, and you had asked earlier, you know, should that be in the job description? And I can tell you from my experience, all government agencies I've ever dealt with print both the salary range.
In the ad?
No, not in the description.
Both, in the description, yes.
When we start bringing people in, before they come in, we ought to tell them the range is, because they might say, "No, thank you."
I would say up to...
Yes, up to a number.
Don't give a low number, just up to...
Yes, sir. Just Google a little quick, City of Clearwater advertised a range of 210 to 270, and they just replaced their city manager last year or something.
Well, I can tell you right now, we're not, we're not...
No, no, no. I looked at a couple of job boards real quick, and then I'll...
Okay, so it was a range?
Yeah, it's a range.
That's the point I'm trying to make. So the question is, is where in this process do we determine it? Is that with the criteria for hiring and waiting and stuff, or...
It's in the posting.
Where? Tell me where, I'm looking for the consensus.
The posting?
You said posting, yeah.
In the posting, so the jobs are...
Turn the weed out.
Not already posted, so...
You can make a modification in posting, for you, absolutely, it's modified posting.
Or it can easily go in the job description on the website. Somebody who's going to, I think, apply, and look at that posting, he's immediately going to run to the website, who's this, where's this Ballard Beach? He's going to go to the website, look at the job description, it's posted on the job description, a salary range, that's perfect.
Something to something. That's true, that's perfect, completely right there.
And then they're probably going to pull up public records requests for that salary.
So that makes sense, so where and when are we going to do that? Because that doesn't exist right now, does it? We don't have a salary range in the job description.
We don't have, you know, to Lloyd's point, in a lot of places, the positions are, like, I'll say number to some degree, like, they'll say from salary level 12 to 20 or something. And that...
So we don't have that scheduled, and that's probably because it's small, so many, right?
And then they're probably going to look at our budget also.
Well, that's first, someone will find out.
And actually, a smart candidate would. A smart candidate would, I'm bad with that.
Yeah. Got 10, right? 10 applications so far. And some of them, but their salary they want is much higher than ours.
Thank you for your service.
We need to find another salary.
I wouldn't think they were too cheap.
So I think that needs to be embedded in P5, under the planning, determine selection criteria. So I think there needs to be in there determined salary range.
Well, I would think that the range would be first, and then we would look through the ad and determine the various skill sets that we mentioned in the ad, and give them a rating as to how each one impacts the potential for a salary.
Yeah, what's the criteria you want to use for evaluating these packages? And I think it starts with evaluating each one, and depending on what we look at, salaries between here and here.
See, because I think maybe we're conflating the two, it's, we're really interested in right now updating the two things, the advertisement and job description now with that salary range. Getting that there in front of the public now.
Yes. I'm not sure, we need to go out and amend the posting, the advertisement for the job if we put that stuff to the job description.
That would work. I don't see any detriment to anybody, as long as they do go to that.
It is out there naturally.
Let me pause for a second. Do we need a break?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it. Five minutes, all right? Okay, we're back after five minutes, and we were discussing criteria for hiring, and also coming up with some sort of a scoring system during that hiring process. I'm looking at the ad that was written, and for the most part, I think it's actually done very well. Does anyone have any problems with it? The reason why I bring this up is, we really should just pick out the key bullet points of this ad, and use this as our ranking system, where maybe everything has a score, and depending upon how you qualify for each one of these, these skill sets, we come up with a scoring system that treats everyone equally, based upon their qualifications and experience, education. Maybe even we look at their salary history, I don't know, but this is something that...
Mr. Mayor, what are you looking at? We're just trying to find our packages.
I'm sorry, I brought the ad with me. Does everyone else have it?
I think the packet, I think.
I don't think it was.
Number nine.
Did I include it in mine?
Qualification. Number nine.
No, the ad, that's all, all that is just job description.
Yeah, I just, I just, yeah, that's the existing job description, and the ad is the new one. So I don't mind taking this on and trying to come up with a ranking system, and then I'll send it out to everybody, and at the next work session, we'll just decide if it's acceptable, and then we'll add it to one of your boxes here. I'm not sure exactly where that will fall, but...
The whole purpose of the drill is to make sure we didn't forget anything, set deadlines, create ownership for some of these things, and remove a lot of, as much subjectivity as we can out of the process, so that we know what we're going to look at, we know how much weight that criteria has, and everybody's treating the same, rather than go in and start the interviews or whatever, and say, oh, that guy came across well.
Sometimes, in an interview, hundreds of different positions, and sort of lots of things like that, I don't want us to get, just my personal opinion, too much where we're just on a point system. But sometimes you can do that, and then you score the different candidates, and then you look at it, and it's like, wow, that person won? I really think this person's going to do a better job, because a lot of times you get that feel, you know, really, and in my opinion, factors in a lot, but sometimes that's not in the scoring system.
What I would use this for, this application process, would be to pick a top five, something like that. Whenever we do the personal interviews, that's whenever you actually are, you get to know them a little better.
And there are ways around some of what you're talking about, besides having, maybe there's another evaluation, which is just your subjective opinion on this guy, gets a little way, 5% of the way or something, because you like the way the guy came across, or the way he answered a certain question, that can be factored in and weighed in too. But when, one way of doing this thing is, when you get the shortlist, and there are five top candidates, rather than everybody just having like one vote, you do this thing like multi-voting, where you might have 10 votes, every person has 10 votes for five applicants. Now, if you want, you can put all 10 of your votes on one person, or you can spread it out, and so you start taking into account some of those individual subjective things there. So there's different ways of skinning this car, taking care of some of those. We can be creative in that.
Okay, all right, well, I'll take a stab at this ranking system, and then I'll send it to Lynn and Patty, and then they can pass it around to everyone, and then we'll bring it back up at the next work session.
And everybody start thinking, but if there's something else you need to add in, and start thinking about deadlines, Mike, you're, you can work it backwards and come up with some straw man deadlines.
I think these are called action items, so I have one already. It sounds like Mike has one.
Can we, can we start sending out after this, just a summary of action items, and what we should, like, you know, so we probably all should review this as well. I think that's really covered a lot of things, you know, items we should be following up on.
So what are you volunteering for?
I mean, I'm happy, I think we all should review this, though, I don't think this should be, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do whatever needs to be done.
Now, just for me, a sec, that, my response, I told these deadlines, I sent that back to Patty, correct?
What was your final date?
Like...
Okay, good.
Give me a ballpoint. We got to, we got to share Memorial Day, right? We share Memorial Day, right?
No, no, what I said was, it's, that's still agreeable, and I'll take my vacation that I have left this term of leave, and I'll come and go as you need. What I, I'm planning to take a few days before Memorial Day, and I'll come back and be here for the June meeting, and whip that out, and then we'll do budget workshops, plan that out, and then after we get through that, and everything's monkey-dory and we've got, so it'll probably be first part of July, but I will be out some first days.
If we need to fly you in for any reason, do we have flexibility on our budget to do that?
Yeah, because I haven't used a lot of my budget for coming to this stuff, so...
You know, I think, I think the goal is, we want to get as close as we can, but I see two hard and fast decision points we need to do. I think we need to do that criteria before we open the first application package.
Definitely.
And those are due May 23rd, so we need to have something in place, ready to go by May 23rd. The other thing I think is a key issue is updating the job description on the website. We talked about salary ranges, and we need to get that up ASAP, so that when people start looking at the job posting, and then goes into the website to look at the job description, they're kind of aligned, and I think that needs to take place in the next week or two.
I agree. We should be able to extrapolate that right out of this ad easily, so who would like to take that action item?
Updating the job description?
Yes.
Well, we've got some of that, that's part B of...
It's updated.
That's right, that's right. Well, it was to discuss and figure out exactly how we were going to...
Unless there's something you want to add to it, that...
You want to update, you want to update everything.
Well, that was updated in 19.
And it's been updated...
March 29th.
Okay, August 22.
So if you've got any comments, just send those to me, and I'll clean it up.
I see two things. One is, I don't think there's enough emphasis on being the point person for the city with emergency or address, what, you are the key man when it comes to hurricane preparation, you're the guy who's sitting in on the county emergency lines. I'm not sure, when I look through the essential functions, I don't really see that in there. It says, yeah, you're the emergency guy, but doesn't really, you know, that. And then the other thing I see there is, you use knowledge, whereas in the posting, we talk about demonstrated experience. So I don't have a problem using both terms, guy has knowledge, or he has demonstrated experience. I'm concerned that a person can sit in on a webinar, or a seminar, or do an online course, and all of a sudden, he's got knowledge in emergency management, or government budgets, or whatever. The purpose of the demonstrated experience is, this guy has in's on experience, sitting down around a table, force creating budget line items and stuff, not just he sat in on a webinar and kind of got to know the piece.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you do some edits to that, that job description, for the most part, it's really like a consultant we hired a couple of years ago. She, she came in and talked to us, redid it, there's, I did two or three edits, because I thought, you need to have some experience in a couple of those things, but if you want some words meant, they just send it to me, and we'll update it.
Okay, there's, I mean, briefly, then, I got to give you guys a warning order here. If you're looking at first of June, you also got to give the incoming person the ability to give their job two weeks' notice, so you're looking at notifying that person on 13 May at the latest that that won, and they have to give their company two weeks' notice. So let's just...
We're not, we're not helpless, we have an answer on that.
Yeah. Then we'll work out.
And I think, depending on...
But I'm not, this is get worst-case scenario.
The level of the person that we're, that we're going to eventually hire, you know, that person most likely will require going in two weeks. You know, it's not a low-level deal, so if it's already a city manager, and they say, I'm going in two weeks, you know, that city's not going to be thrilled, but, yeah, so that could happen, they would say...
But that's definitely what it is.
What's next?
That's it, I hit the job description, I'll take that one for action.
Right, and Mike, you're working on the deadline, the hard cut dates?
Yep. Break out a Microsoft project, put up the dates.
Need the duration.
I've got that. And what about interview questions? Is this something one of us should be working on, something to add to it? You look at, you look at what's in here, but what about the other questions, the ones that aren't in here?
Well, maybe you need to decide upfront, is it going to be a group interview, or is it going to be individual interviews? Because I've seen it work both ways, and...
What they've done in the past is the citizens and the council member, mixed group, they did phone interviews, and that's when they kind of shortlisted, they went through and did that. They went through the applications, which is kind of what we're doing today, get the criteria, and then they did a phone interview, and they had a list of questions.
As a member of professional association, usually they publish those, you know, things to ask in your job interview, do you have a list of those type?
They had a list of those questions, and we'll pull those from the other, and then...
Don't you have a battery of questions you would ask? Since you do the job, it would be great to get a battery of questions from you.
Well, the things at the phone interview, I think that's the preliminary time, we set that up in the conference room, did the phone call.
And now we have Zoom. It's a budget here.
Yeah, but that's how we did it, or how they did it.
Another resource available to us is the ICMA, the City Managers Association, you know, made up of retired city managers, and they help you interview all of you, come up with questions, or... help, help you interview all of you, come up with questions or.
All sorts of. We'll, we'll pull out the stuff we used in the past just so you know what it is.
Maybe we should engage them and see if they have someone that would participate.
You know, I think once we get to the shortlist, again, I've been involved in a bunch of these and questions are nice, you know, but when we're down to the shortlist, I've seen it would be very effective when we're having like role-playing scenarios.
Interviews.
I can, I can bury somebody in a role-play situation to see how they're going to react and that's important. I want to see, I mean, they, they know questions, they can, they can say anything, answer a question. You put them in a role-play scenario where there's something actually happening, you know, we get all the good actors that work for the city and, and it could be impressive to see somebody who really shine and other people will just follow. And, you know, and it becomes obvious who maybe the best candidates are.
Sort of a high-stress.
Well, my experience, a lot of HR directors will tell you, a lot of people can be a good actor, come up with questions, come up with the answers to throw the questions out there. That's why you're always stressed for like six months of probation and everything like that because.
Oh, you have to find that.
And I think the important thing is, we're not hiring the pope or a Supreme Court judge here. This is an Apple state. The guy doesn't.
It would be less than his job as a Supreme Court.
What's going to be interesting about this interview is that any of, any of these candidates have, which I'm sure they all do, have city manager experience, what they're not going to have is the type of experience this job requires.
Yes.
So it's going to be very interesting to see how this.
Absolutely.
unfolds.
Yeah. This is a unique job.
Something we gloss over too is the city attorney has a little, there's to review the hiring contract and.
I've drafted many of these. I have some standard terms and conditions for counsel to consider when negotiating. So you've got that? Yes, ma'am, I have. I'm under that accident. All right, is anyone reaching out to the City Managers Association? All right, and do we have enough, is enough assignments to, to prepare for the next meeting? Any sense of, yes?
Yes.
Forget about this so far?
Yep.
All right. If we have no other comments, it's eight o'clock right now, so I think we're actually doing better than I expected. All right, number three, review public records policy. This was added to the agenda by Jody Shirley. Would you like to open the floor up on that one?
Yeah, sure. Um, so I wanted to review what our current policy is because there have been so many public records requests. My last inquiry, there were like thirty-five or something like that. And each request, actually I don't have everything I order over here, so I'm hitting on the current policy, but each request, you know, takes Patty away from her job duties and she, and I can tell you just by the time you get an email, you gotta research what it is we're looking for, reply to the email and then pull up the information and, you know, send that information back, she's probably not hitting the minimum, she's not charging anything big enough and she's not putting any time on the answering the initial email or anything like that. I think we need to have, not necessarily a minimum hours, but minimum fee. So, because I think a lot of the requests are, people don't evaluate upon our staff's time. I think they're just habitually going, oh, can I get a copy of that contract? Not thinking through that. Patty's gotta stop what she's doing to get the information to the resident or whoever it is acquiring. So my feeling is, if I called in and asked Patty for something and she said there's a minimum $10 fee, I would gladly pay it because I know it's going to take her away from her regular scheduled work. So I just wanted to, us to kind of think about that and how much time, I mean, at this point, those requests she's had to date, probably she's lost a week's worth of work this year just providing people information that they called out. It may, you know, may be legitimate request, but I'm just saying, there's time spent and it pulls time from our staff.
Five point four should really be strictly the question, okay? You want a, you want a public information request more than Patty, but you should come up with at least a fifty percent. Or, you know, before she starts, she can, she can do an estimate of hours if it's a public information request by me, I can do it, estimate of hours on anyone, it's the same. It's gonna take me two hours, this is my fee. You need to come up with fifty percent because not to Patty on the spot. How many public information requests are presented? She does all the work and no fees are ever paid and no information's ever going forward. I, I have one, I have a bill out there for almost a year right now and I assume that the person never paid for the public information.
Eric?
The law says that you can charge at the hourly rate, the lowest hourly rate of anybody who's going to actually do the job. So obviously, in this case, Patty's hourly rate that we're using. You can ask for payment in advance. In this case, your policy talks about fifty percent. What's really important about that is if there is actual documents that are created and the person never pays, the city does not have to respond to another public records request from that person.
Yes.
Until then. And that's kind of how, there's some control over the public records request because they, they do come pretty, pretty voluminous. So that's one way of dealing with those individuals, but you absolutely can charge that and you absolutely can ask for it in advance and Patty just has to determine which she thinks will be roughly her time period and her, and the user hours.
And that's what I'm saying, in my past work experience, you can gridlock a city by just doing volume of public information requests and then pick them up.
In Gulfport, we have one person who's made a thousand public records requests in a twelve-month period.
Can we also put that cancellation policy in there as well? The, the piece that you just mentioned, if you fail to pay for what you requested, I mean, we have here, you will pay, but if you failed to pay, it should be in there as well.
Yes.
Well, five point three gives some guys, I mean, you talked about the fifteen minutes and if it's more than fifteen minutes, you give them a good faith estimate of what it's going to cost before you even go do something.
Well, I was trying to address what happens if they don't pay. They've already made the request, they've made the copies, they're sitting there, that what you do with that person for future requests. Like, maybe the better thing is, what's the time limit? Here's your bill to pay, okay? And you give it to them when the money, you need to pay by Friday or is it legal to say the information request is dissolved until, you can always renew it.
Well, I mean, really, the law in this area is very liberal towards the request reasonable. I mean, they are the, there's a lot of cases and they talk about it's the public's right to see public records within certain restrictions. And the restrictions are basically what we talked about. You know, time periods, how, how much it would cost to do that, but of course, as I said, you could ask, somebody could come in every day and do a public records request and we'd have to, and you'd have to take it and deal with it and, and there's nothing you could do to stop that. I don't think the case is all the time.
Problem is, it's trying to, to give a good faith estimate, it's not, there's no, you don't, Patty, you don't know what your.
In some cases, you know where that record is and you can, you can make a copy and hand it off to somebody in five minutes, but other times, I'm sure it takes hours to go find a certain record or is that, is that the case for you?
Right, and it could also involve every department that is going to have to look for something too. So, yeah, just to give a good faith estimate takes time.
And the unknown of what the record is because Patty may have to redact it and that takes a lot of time.
Right.
But she hasn't seen the record yet, so by the time she gets it, it could be a digital time in that situation.
And what I'm saying is, the law says, we give them a price, if it exceeds that price and we refund their money, but she gets an information request with all city council emails. That's going to take, as you said, not even a week, it's going to take more than a week. Okay, so.
Well, that, you do, you do provide the estimate and if they're not willing to put up the money.
That's my.
Then we do not have to respond.
That's my fault.
That is correct. And I've seen that happen where people have done that and given the estimate their own.
Yeah. Part of the problem is, we, we don't accurately track the true cost of what you're doing. I mean, Patty will take a public records request and work on and I'd be willing to bet that eighty percent of the time they received fifteen minutes, but they don't charge for it. Maybe we need like a worksheet when a request comes in, is this going to take fifteen minutes or less? Yes, but then if it's more than fifteen minutes, you gotta kind of estimate, hey, it's gotta go into departmental, it's gonna take X number of hours to do it, it's gonna take a week or whatever, you come up with some ballpark figure and that's, you don't even start the process of doing that request. You communicate right back to the person, we estimate it's going to cost you $500. And if you want us to proceed on this, we need an upfront deposit of X number of dollars and when we have that deposit, we'll start executing.
I don't think there's anybody on counsel that would.
That's what we do.
Fifteen-minute request, should we give it to somebody, a document or whatever that's out of hand?
See, that's where I'm having a problem is that I don't think anything should be free. I think that they're taking Patty from her job, her regular assigned duties and many of those requests aren't more than fifteen minutes, but it's still stopping her. Maybe, and, and I'd say it's not more than fifteen minutes because she's thinking, okay, well, I make a copy and that didn't take me fifteen minutes. But from the initial, I got, she got an email, she's got to do some, she's got to respond to the email, she's got to go research that document they want, provide it for them, it's probably more than fifteen minutes. But she's just looking at that initial copy of, okay, fifteen minutes and it didn't take me fifteen. I think every request should have a minimum charge.
I, yeah, I disagree with that because you're, and double-checking all of it, you're negating the whole thing of freedom and you're already paying them for services. The taxes paid for this.
Right, case law would be against you.
There's guidance in the public records.
And, and the case law talks about fifteen minutes or a half hour in some cases where you don't charge. And remember, the other thing is, is that I can make a public records request and I'm not copying it, I'm just having, I just want to look at it. And so that is supposed to be really a no charge unless it takes a long time for Patty to pull it out. So I should be able to come in, if I call her up and say, I'd like to see the city manager's contract and just come in and look at it and not, there should really be no charge in that situation.
Well, the inspection of records is one thing, but the time to consume that inspection is another.
But it's upright.
Make it portable.
That's whenever there, it, it starts bogging you down.
Yes.
And we'll talk to you more about this on Wednesday, but the one thing to remember in a public records request lawsuit, there's attorney's fees and costs that are awarded and a lot of times, that's why we see these lawsuits. Because there's people out there that that's all they're doing. Attorneys are just making their living off of doing lawsuits like that.
Fred Riley did an excellent course and all that.
So Patty questioned, how many public records requests have you had since the first of the year?
I believe like it's around thirty-five since the first of the year, yeah. Now, I will say that they have almost come to a halt just recently, so, yeah.
Election later, probably.
Yeah.
I just made a public records request for the sheriff's department recently and basically their language said, the estimated charge is X. If you want us to proceed, go ahead and send us that amount of money now and if it's less than that, we'll reimburse you and if it's more than that, you're going to pay us the difference.
So more like a refundable deposit.
It could be, or they could ask for more money. They could say, well, we estimate it's going to be $135, turned out to be $250, you owe us $120. If you don't pay us, we're not giving you the document. Yes, they.
That's covered under five point five.
Is that under their initial acknowledgement?
Yes.
They acknowledge, they said, we acknowledge you have a public records request and then they, they give you the estimate right then and there.
Yes. Or I'm not a hundred percent, they may have sent me a separate email.
Yep.
But the last one I got or the first one, whichever the case may be, it, it included that, that cost. So.
So the mechanism's actually there then, it's just we haven't been exercising our authority to say, this is the estimate, you pay up front.
And maybe we get them to pay upfront instead of fifty percent.
Yeah.
I don't think you, you can't, you can't charge them fifty percent upfront.
It looks to me like.
Where's your whole thing?
Did they give you a final build out then, saying, an itemized bill saying this is what?
No, they said this is our estimate.
An estimate and you, you prepay it and if it's less, then you get a refund and if it's more, you owe money.
You would be lying for that question.
I'm curious, Patty, are you currently logging the amount of time you spend from start to finish on each records request you receive? Like, I know you've got a log of records requests, but are you logging the time that you're spending on that records request?
Well, basically, what I do is what you all have been saying. So like Jody said, if I have one that says, I want to see the city manager's contract, I get that all the time. So I have it ready to go. It takes me five minutes, you know? By the time I, like Andy said, I acknowledged their request with a separate email, then I actually do the request, you know, based on where it is in the workflow of requests. If there's three requests ahead of it, I don't do it right then, but I send the acknowledgement of the request. So then, so I know that one's not going to take me any time, so I'm not tracking that. I have one right now that I sent them an estimate of what the time would be and what the cost would be and let me know how you proceed, would like to proceed. And that's what, you know, I get those. Well, this particular one has never responded and I've had a couple like that. So you do all the work and they don't respond and you know how much time it takes and what the cost would be and then some of them do pay and then, you know, so when you say, do I track the time?
Well, I'm wondering if you're recording enough data to where you have case histories of this type of records request will take me this long. And so you now have a better quoting mechanism than just guessing. I'm just wondering.
Right, and I understand what you're asking, but each one, except for the simple ones that are repetitive, it's really hard to tell because you never know who else is going to be involved and, and what they're actually requesting. Because a lot of times they'll make a really broad request and you'll have to narrow them down. You know, I can give you what you're asking for, but if you really have a specific question, you know, I can give you a better estimate of time and money.
It's kind of crazy. It, it's almost like you have to do the records request in advance to be able to give them an estimate.
A little bit, yeah.
But you said, Mr. Mayor, a lot of this stuff is repetitive, so there should be some type of formula, you know?
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
And it's only a good faith estimate. I mean, she, she says, based on my experience of having done this over, for the last twenty-five years, this is how much time it's going to take to do that one. Therefore, my hourly rate times this number of hours, here's my good faith estimate, this is what it's going to cost, give me fifty percent deposit and if you want me to proceed.
And that's a good, you had a comment?
Leslie's trying to say something.
Do we have some sort of a log that goes with the request, like if you have to turn
the request over to Kyle or some, for him to, or something that he puts down his time and stuff and we can get it back, then we can charge them for.
Right. No, I usually go to the department and ask them, you know? I, I don't have a log, but I do, I just ask them, how long do you think this will take? Fifteen minutes or less? And, you know, so I don't have a log.
That's a valid administrative point. Typically, when, when you staff things out in, in many offices, there's a cover sheet that goes on. Typically, when, when you staff things out in, in many offices, there's a cover sheet that goes on it. You pass it to the next department, and he says, okay, I started, I got it on this date, I spent two and a half hours on it, and then goes to the next guy. And you get it back and it's complete, you add up the hours, and there's the final cost. That's a good administrative point.
Is there, if, if a public information request comes in and we say it's going to cost five hundred dollars, where then at the end of the day it's only a hundred dollars, is that a gross violation of, of excessive fees? I, I didn't see that in, no, but if you're doing something that would in essence prohibit or curb somebody from doing your request. Right. So we have to be, I'd rather underestimate it over estimate.
What I'm just saying is their case law saying, keep charging us well over the estimate of cost.
There's not a, I don't, I looked at this recently, I didn't see a case that talked about that. There have been challenges to cost and that, and that we've seen. And fairly often, when they're, when they're excessive, and there's a thousand dollars or something like that, there'll be challenges to that. On the hourly rate, they'll require you to show who, who is the person or date of lowest hourly rate of somebody who's actually doing the job and have to come up with that documentation to support what they're.
We've been down that road recently, right?
So Patty, did you say that there has been, and there are times when you will tell them what the cost is, and then you'll go ahead and, and do the work? And then they don't come by to pick it up?
No, we just estimate the cost as best as we can.
Right.
And, no, we don't do the work.
Okay, good.
No, yeah, and I'm very specific, like if I ask finance, don't do it, just give me an approximate time of how, how long you think it might take you.
A lot of people will not pay. So I, that's what I was just saying, so it'll be done.
Right. So I guess the question is, is, I mean, it sounds like we're wanting to change something, but what is it that we're, that we should change about our current system?
In my opinion, I think that just doing a better job of documenting our actual time spent. And then having, yes, the change I think would be to prepay rather than deposit.
So remove the fifty percent.
Right.
So a fifty percent deposit.
Remove fifty percent deposit.
And they prepay for the estimated cost. Patty doesn't use it all up and they refund it, but at least, you know, there's not the chances of they've done all this work and it doesn't get picked up.
So no fifty percent, a one hundred percent based upon the estimate, but it has to be reasonable.
Did we have to add something in here that says, if it turns out to be less than that, we'll give you some of your money back?
I think it's.
Down to the actual cost.
Well, we have to change that.
Five point five.
And five.
Yeah, the, the verbiage would need to be changed a little bit, probably throughout the entire document.
We'll make those changes in a great time.
Okay, great. Anything else on this topic? Moving, well, now we are to discussing the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to take away city manager fees.
Yes, Mayor, constant of the, ARPA funds, we've got our first positive, we've got four hundred and one thousand dollars last fall. And we're going to get a total of eight hundred and two thousand and sixty-eight dollars. We haven't used any of those funds yet. There's a report due end of April that I have to submit to them. But we haven't exercised what we want to do with those, the council has. So what the Citizens Advisory Committee recommended is using for stormwater and then taking some of the stormwater funds that we projected to use for Gulf Boulevard anyway, to shore that cost. And later in here, I'll explain that to you. But at this point, all I need from the council is, you know, is the direction still to use it for stormwater. In census, that's one of the areas, and we'll go ahead and do the report that way. And then when we move it forward. With that, the first bid we got in for a stormwater project is, we've got a budget of about five hundred and twenty thousand for this project on twelve to thirteenth street. Came in at seven hundred and twenty thousand.
That was a little bit.
A little bit. I've talked to the engineer about it, did the design work for us. He said it seems like a reasonable number based on what's happened. And based on a couple of things that happened that we'll talk about, number six. Two updated numbers going up thirty percent.
Yes.
Yeah, just a brief question, stormwater, I just want to make sure that's in concurrence with our strategic plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, and the ARPA funds, stormwater is one of the projects you can use the money for.
So can you just brief review of everything that's stormwater, that, that applies to stormwater drainage?
Stormwater is the curbs and then any piping or drainage. The paving is a separate, separate thing. And the bid that came in, as I said, came in at seven hundred and seventeen thousand. Yeah, the low bid came in at seven hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty.
Yeah, because your low costs are going up?
They're saying everything's going up.
What was the high bid in this case?
Eight hundred and twenty-one thousand. We only got two bids.
So this was for twelve and thirteen?
Right, right. So I'll talk to the engineer a little more. We made a revision or see if we can do something, do some adjustments. But the same thing happened with the boat ramp. Boat ramp bid came in at two hundred and twenty-five thousand, the boat ramp, two sea walls. And that's over the budgeting money that we have available. I mean, it's just crazy. Well, with the stormwater money, or the ARPA money, you know, we could, we've already budgeted the five hundred and twenty. Maybe we take some of the hour, put it towards that to finish. But until we get to that, because of disparity, you know. But the numbers on the bids are everywhere.
I, I expected this, it's a, just the cost of fuel alone is, is staggering.
Oh, no, no, I'm not. I mean, it's every, you know, and I expected the bids to go up. So in the budget that I'm getting ready to present to the Citizens Advisory Committee tomorrow, and I, the preliminary budget, we're going to have to go back into the zap years and bump that, you know, the capital projects and stormwater bids. Tomorrow. Eight, eight and a half, they're saying. So it's not going to slow down. But I guess we, we projected in our capital budget, X amount of dollars for the projects. And with the ARPA money, we could probably take the difference, we, we use that as a, make it work for a few of the projects. But it, it's not going to help the AP. That's, that's where we're at. So I just wanted to get a consensus from the council, because we did talk about using it for stormwater. Are we still moving that as a consensus?
I have to follow that. And it's stormwater drainage is, is something that I think most of us have committed to from day one, unless someone has a different idea.
No, concurrently, floodwater drainage.
Are there any contracts out there, you know, like for example, the pavement? A lot of the other counties will put the language in there toward other government agencies to piggyback. These are more job specific, but for maybe the gutter, do any of the, are there any other contracts out there we may be able to piggyback? And hopefully save us money?
Well, we may be able to, I don't know if those costs have went up in those contracts, because there's probably some kind of escalation in. Same with paving. We did, Harrison, we did, we did the auto, we did those off the contracts we were going to jump on.
Does anyone expect the cost of moving forward to go down at all?
No.
Well, here's, here's where I'm going with this. We've got a reserve right now, and I know it's sacred, and we, and we shouldn't ever consider touching it. But actually, we've discussed several times on this council and on the last council, that is that money serving us appropriately? Are we getting any bang for buck or just sitting in the van?
No, we're not.
And with the cost of.
We might be in six months, but not now.
With, with the cost of everything going up, I mean, and it's, and we don't think it's going to blow, come back down, should we maybe consider tapping into some of that to accelerate these projects? Get them out of the way so that we're set for the next ten to twenty years? Rather than, it looks like right now what we're doing is we're struggling to find out how to pay for these projects. And I don't know to what extent we would want to move forward on this, but it's something that I would, I would certainly entertain.
Well, we're, we're experiencing hyperinflation. We experienced that back in the late seventies, and then it did correct itself. I mean, I, I can't see this balloon taking much more air. I mean, oil right now is trading, what, at ninety-four bucks a barrel, which it was trading back in January, gas is only, what, two ninety a gallon?
Couldn't give it away for a while.
Well, that was, that was March of twenty twenty. It's, it's, we're trading it at ten dollars a barrel. But what I'm saying is, I, I don't see how this, this bubble is going to keep blowing up. You make a good point, I mean, if I'm wrong, maybe we're a little screwed, but I mean, and, and the whole, everyone's.
Well, that, that brings up the real specter is, and I've been looking at the forecasts, as inflation goes up, the housing bubble obviously kind of, it's going to pop. The housing appraisals will drop precipitously, and that's really the key source of our income.
Yeah, but they only drop whenever you do a project or you sell your home. They, they raise or lower, they, it's a gradual thing, even though the, the, the cost of homes is going up. Someone walks into this market and they bought from someone who's owned their house for ten years, all of a sudden, they get that, that major tax increase, but it doesn't, I, I don't think it's a all at once, you know, rise or fall.
We do have to put that into the forecast though. It, it's a component that is regularly inserted in forecasts, and we need to know that.
The jury's kind of hung on there. You know, one line of thinking is that the temp area is catching up to places like Boston and New York or Miami or wherever. So, yeah, I guess the jury's hung on. I, I do like their idea that some ratings are up, because I think a lot of cash we've got sitting in the bank right now is basically losing down.
Well, another thing that I, that I think about is, okay, this is an emergency fund. This is supposed to be used in the event of an emergency. But if we're not able to effectively drain as much as we can during one of these storms, it's going to cause more damage and cost us more money in the long run if we do have a big storm. So just throwing it out there to see what everybody thinks because.
We talked about developing a protocol or a criteria where we can apply those emergency reserve funds for projects as long as we say, okay, well, we're going to pay it back in two years or something like that. He's getting a good handle on his capital projects and also prioritizing and looking at timing right there. So I guess a natural extension of that is start running that burn rate, come up with different scenarios, and then we can make a long decision.
Well, with, I think we could take the ARPA money and use it as filler. I mean, it's a gift, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we absolutely should take that. I mean, definitely, and I think using it for storm because there's so few things we can use it more. Which is also why the cost of all this pipe is so expensive, because the federal government's open their pockets. So every city in the nation is doing just what we're doing with federal funds. So prices are going to go skyrocketing. But last time we talked about using the reserve, we also discussed if we use that reserve, having to place a line of credit for emergency purposes. And I don't think that went anywhere, but we probably should look at that again. So if we, if we use up the reserves to get some of these projects accelerated, we should have a source if we have a hurricane and we need funds quick, so we have a line of credit in place. Ryan's no longer in the banking business.
Are we, are you, as a municipality, tapping the loan rate?
What's our total reserve here? I'll call it unfunded reserves is about a little over two point three million, two point five.
What would you call it unfunded?
It's not committed anything.
Okay.
As an example, you've got a million dollar reserve, that's committed. I don't have the financial thing.
There were millions I just heard for emergencies.
But there's a major storm.
Then we have to commit twenty, is it twenty percent of our budget, operating budget? And that's like five hundred and fifty thousand, be off there a little bit. But those are things that we subtract from our cash.
Well, what I'm saying is that there is a major storm budget bid, that two million dollars is going to be named anyway for any federal help.
Well, if there's a major storm, if the city, we'd be going, it'd be much likely the worst. I mean, hurricane, our cost is thirty thousand, the city funds, you pretty much got all of that.
Typically, a huge lag on that stuff too, you know?
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't want to bank on it. Hope is not a strategy.
What were some of the projects that we had to do during that storm that we needed to do?
Mostly debris removal and, you know, that roof coming off our maintenance building, signage and stuff like that.
How about the wind generation?
Well, the biggest problems you'll have is all of these homes that have power lines behind their houses. That, that, there's no access, there's no way to get to them, and they all have trees growing all around the lines. So if we have a huge wind event, it'll, they'll be without power for a very long time.
Yeah, well, you can tell that last time if you were, this end of, basically, it's about eighteen to nineteen three, this way, you don't have any power for a week.
So then brings up the top of the underground divorce issue in future discussions.
Well, that's a, that's a topic that's, for the city to pay for, that's a big expense.
And there's no, there's no incentive to do, to do this. The only way, the only way that they will assist is if they already have a project in play or are scheduled to do upgrades on existing infrastructure. So let's say that they've got a line running behind, behind someone's house, and they want to increase the capacity. Well, if you wanted to underground while they were doing that, they would use the money that they set aside for their project to offset the undergrounding. But you're, they're never going to pay for a major portion of it.
No, we got a, for EBI, I think I got like an eighty thousand dollar grant. That's, that's what I got. But hey, that's eighty thousand, it went back to the rest of it, so that's a good thing, but that's all that matters. So, I, I gather the consensus for the Harper funds for now is to use it for...
Store water.
Store water and we'll use it as a door, once I get a better, a little more discussion with the engineer, we'll decide if we can go out and bid again or just take the bid through four.
Okay, and that's the good news and now the bad news.
The bad news?
Which is the next topic.
Well, the code, code fine, okay, well, the bad news is, I have the house on Twenty-Fifth Street, which I'm sure a lot of you've seen, it's been standing there for, the corner of Twenty-Fifth and Ibis, behind the mansion. Yeah, well, he, he ran out of his time a year ago, over a year ago. The city allows eighteen months plus a six-month extension, we gave him an eight-month extension because of the pandemic. He didn't accomplish months in the eight-month extension, I think he did get his wins in if I remember right. Okay, but that was in the pandemic extension, so...
He needed it, he needed it too, didn't he?
Well, that's reasonable, so, we took him to Code Magistrate in January of last year. He was given till August thirty-first to complete, or there was a hundred dollar a day fine, that didn't happen. And at the same time, he was told to give us a schedule. We're gonna make this, the rough end of the, the rough end of, the rough end of this, and if you fail to meet the schedule, then there's a twenty-five dollar a day fine for each one of those fines. So, this is the, the schedule of this, he didn't meet any of it and the schedule ran out August thirty-first last year. So, at this point, recently, a couple of his fines have stopped. You got the mechanical rough end, the electrical rough end and the plumbing rough end, those have passed inspection. Well, with interest and fines and this, that and the other, this total fine as of the end of March was a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Put that on toll street.
Well, that, that's one, that's, that's his one, that's the biggest one. We have another gentleman that rented his house and failed to mail it in for registration two years ago last year. So we took him to Code Magistrate, magistrate fined, gave a fine of seventy-five dollars a day until he caught a crime. He didn't, he didn't do anything, the address he had on the house for his mail, you know, where to send his mail, was the rental house. Of course, he claims the, just to give you an example, these are the letters that we've sent to this individual. A lot of them came back with address unknown or some of them somebody signed for.
And all he had to pay for was the permit?
All he had to pay for was, uh, three hundred dollars. Okay, so, he didn't do that, well, now his fines up to twenty-eight thousand. His fine did stop, but, this is for a rental crime, rental crime. This gentleman came to me and said, we had a conversation, so what he's offering the city is, I'm, I'm offering to give you two thousand dollars to settle this claim and that's typical negotiating, so... I don't know where the council's at with that.
Oh, did he take the house?
Huh? Well, twenty-eight thousand, right now. Well, that's already gone.
Okay, so, there are firms out there, in fact, whenever I went to the mayor's council luncheon at Christmas, there were two law firms sitting outside, they had tables set up and they were looking for municipalities willing to sell those lanes for cash. And I think we should look into it because we'll never get the amount that they owe us, but if we even got a fraction of it, that's better than what we're getting now.
Well, as, as an example, you run a council, we had the, the house on Harrison, his fine got like fifty or ninety thousand dollars and I negotiated with him and he ended up paying us five thousand, which is about fifty percent. So, and then the other big one we have is a short-term one. Well, that's the house that's on Bay Shore, that they rented and then we caught him and then I catch him again, the seawall fell in on him, they had a sale of the house and my understanding right now that sale of the house is some kind of litigation, is the guy that wanted to buy the house, they tried to back out of it, he had a contract on it and then the seawall had developed, there was some conflict there and I don't know if it's still under litigation. The Shanks paid us a couple thousand dollars, probably, I'm gonna say a month, six weeks ago, on their fine. Right now it's twelve thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. But from what they indicated to me is until this issue of the contract on the house is settled, they can't sell it. So, I guess it's in some kind of way, from a real estate standpoint. So, those are the big ones, we've got a small one, south on the corner, we've got a four hundred and eighty dollar old fine, interesting. She's getting ready to hit more than that because we took her to the magistrate about her swimming pool and her screen enclosure. She had thirty days to get the swimming pool cleaned up, that ended March thirteenth, so there was a fine of seventy-five dollars. And then, she's got till Wednesday to get her screen enclosure, they, because they went in and put plywood and they touched the screen out. So, her fine's probably gonna go up too, but...
Couple of questions, a couple of questions, the harbor, the one with the harbor drivers, and what you said, the one with the seawall that fell and...
Bay Shore.
Bay Shore, okay, um, what, what is the status of it, have they quit renting it, have they quit the short-term...
No, they've stopped any of it.
Okay, I didn't know if they were still occurring or if they're still there or whatever.
Unfortunately, I was the one that was the guy that was catching it at the time, because it would happen on a weekend.
But they're not doing it now, now the house is sitting empty, interior...
I don't, every once in a while I'll see someone over there, so I know they're bringing some people in, but it may be relatives or something.
No, no, it's the owners or the daughter, and then they have a major guy that comes there. The background on that, the husband is in Taiwan and can't leave the country until he pays it or something.
That's a address, that's a problem, I think they're interested in buying it.
I don't think you can buy it, you think the title companies hold, will hold it?
Well, the problem, the problem is, is, I can't remember the guy's name, the guy that wanted to buy it, who really wanted to buy it. I mean, I've talked to him probably four or five months ago, just trying to figure out a way to get ahold of him. My understanding is they gotta pay some money to the Taiwan government to let him leave, so... And that's what the daughter told me also, when she came in to pay the couple thousand dollars. So, that's, that's where, you know, I've talked to Andy about a couple of these, especially the big ones. And, you know, the, the owner basically told me, I'm not paying the fine, actually, or I'm gonna shoot myself in the head, that's what he said, I guess, all of them. So...
The problem is, even if you sold the lien, you know, it's still collecting fines and stuff, so I mean, we're still working on it.
Yeah, he gets a bill, we mail him a bill.
I mean, I like the idea, like, I mean, we're still doing the same work.
We still have the same problem, it's not going away.
But if we sell, if we sell the lien, we start holding it back?
Well, I think the, for that house, doesn't it stop? If that was, if that lien went away, that's the end of their fines, correct?
Their what?
Their, their fines that they're getting, they're, they're not violating anything else.
He resets the clock, not until, not until he completes the task that the magistrate put upon him, and he hasn't done that. Now the story is, I've been in contact with the guy that's helping me, he's in the last of the money, there's been a little more activity there.
I'm not talking about Twenty-Fifth, I'm talking about Bay Shore.
Oh, Bay Shore is something to do with a legal issue, they can't sell it. I know based on what the daughter told me, they would sell it, but they can't because the guy that wanted to buy this whole thing, so...
What are they, the ones that offered us two thousand?
No, that's the guy that's renting the house, that failed to pay his rent fee. Took him to the magistrate because he wouldn't respond to us. And the magistrate charging seventy-five dollars a day, so it's, and now that fine has stopped. Paid last year's rental registration and this year's and the bad check that he gave us, he paid it all back.
Well, I think we kind of set a standard like we did with ISA where, you know, give us fifty percent and we'll make you pull away. I mean, there was kind of that standard, we took a little lesser amount from there, but...
And that's typical what happens, typically when you have code violation, unless the code fines get to the point where it's more value than the house.
That's, that's probably all we would get out of a collection service anyway.
Yeah, you can't file suit, I mean, normally what happens when you file suit, they come to see Lynn.
Right.
Because then they're, then they know the city is serious and then they'll come and try to negotiate something. I think the frustration that Lynn was having with some of these is that they just wouldn't, wouldn't respond. I mean, if you're willing to take fifty percent or negotiate it, that's great, you don't have to go any further, but sometimes you have to file suit just to get their attention.
Right, I think the Twenty-Fifth, like, you have to file suit there or do something else.
If the guy on Sixteenth Street or that has that house rented, it's in his trust, his mother's name. He's now changed an address to where he's at, so the mail, whatever. But what woke him up was, he sent him a check in for a hundred bucks for rental registration this year, well, it's three hundred, so it's pretty quick here. But there was an address on it and we sent him, the lien note was supposed to be filed with the court and all of a sudden, he shows up, but all his time he's claiming he never got any of our mail, the rental didn't do it. I mean, we've got pictures posted in front of the house with the boat thing. And so, he came back and said, well, I'll pay you, and Andy and I did talk about it, he says, I'll pay you what, what the city expended. And I said, well, you make an offer, you can do, but I'll tell you what, I did tell him that the council in the past has used the leverage of fifty percent.
Are we ready to pull the trigger on these other ones to file a suit and bring them to a negotiation deal?
It's whatever council wants to do, we have no problem doing that, I have some pending right now, done recently for Gulfport, so... One, we didn't get any response, that's all we were able to resolve.
Is that the purpose of this discussion?
Yeah, I want some, I want some guidance on what you're wanting to do.
Absolutely, I have no problem with that, I just wanna make sure that we're getting the most bang for buck. So, I still think it'd be a good idea just to reach out, I, I may, I may still have a card and I'll give it to you or at least send the contact information and let's see, I mean, it never hurts to listen just to see what they have. Because whichever one puts more money back into the city's pocket, I'm, I'm for.
So, you know, as far as the guy with the rental, I mean, I'll just tell you what the, what you've done in the past, but that's what you'll have to do, correct?
That's step one, is the fifty percent offer.
Maybe the other thing we could do with some of these is do just a letter from my office and you should tell them to contact the city manager the next day, we've been authorized to move forward on legal action.
That's probably the most economical solution.
I think each one has a different scenario, I don't think that's gonna motivate the guy that's under construction, he's not gonna job them. So I don't know how, I mean, I think each one has to be handled differently.
Well, we could do that as a courtesy, so that anybody who comes before you says, well, I can't believe the city moved forward and just filed suit. No, city manager's been in touch with you, got another letter from the city attorney's office and then you file suit.
Curious, do you think this, this guy is building his house with cash and he's taking his time?
Well, he may be, but he's wasting a lot of money. I, I'm just, just to give you a quick scenario, he put all the can lights in the seal, okay? Evidently one in one day, a lot of them liked those can lights, so we told the electrician to come in and tear them all back down and throw them in the box. And they threw them away, can lights have never even been used and then he put new can lights up.
Probably could have paid his fine with it.
Well, he, I mean, this is the things that body do, and I probably have more into it now with the molesters I spent more time trying to do, in his house stuff and, you know, he, he, his permit expired, he was just...
So the county, the permit is issued through the county?
He had to reapply.
He had to reapply.
As they expire.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I was in contact with the county, so, he's got these fines going.
When they go to him and say, you know, you need the post completion bond or something like that, I kind of get a little creative with them because they give you something in the board, because if he's gonna keep telling you to get it done, he's not gonna get it done, so...
Well, now he says he's gonna get it, or his person, he has a brother that lives here, he lives on Harrison, okay? He's, he's gonna get, he's got someone working on the house and Bob, the owner of the house, is out of it because I will say over the last two or three weeks, there's been a lot of activity there. So I check it out pretty regularly and, you know, the pluggers are there, the electrician's there, the wire's being pulled.
I mean, that's an inexpensive way to make sure the property gets done, he does completion bond, it has a, you know, your job's not done by whatever it is, December thirty-first, we take the bond, we complete the house, you know, whatever, so, I don't know.
So, we're at, right now they're talking July.
That's not exactly July.
As I've told you, I said, there's a deal, you've got to pay the fine or you're not getting sealed, that's the deal, so... You can have a house up there, you don't get the fine.
But that just hurts the neighbors, right, because I know they just want, so, he knows he's not gonna...
Say sorry with the letter and, and let's, let's move forward with that, and everybody else agree. I know we've got three minutes, do we have time to move over to the Duke, the Gulf Boulevard undergrounding?
Yeah, I'll tell... Okay, uh, let's see, okay, Duke came, we, we've got about four million dollars to do our underground on Gulfport.
That's, that's penny per million.
That is per million, we're second year of that, right now, we're eligible for like one point four million of that money. The second year of that, right now, we're eligible for like one point four million of that money. One million of that money is coming from Beller Shore. They agreed to let us use it like we did in the past. So I think at this point, with all this escalation of pricing, that what we're gonna probably need to do is, and I went back to Duke about these numbers, cause they sent me updated numbers and told me they went three hundred thousand dollars way up on the first phase. She is looking at those numbers because what was recommended, we'd split the stuff north of Bosway into two phases. And then she came back with this split in both sections, and that wasn't the intent. So they are relooking at the numbers. And then the last sheet of that group of packet of stuff, that's from the guy that I used for EBI, Mark Porter. He has it, he was selected off a contract for him for Indian Rocks Beach, so I think we could jump off that contract. But I think where we're at right now, we're, if we can get this Duke number back down for a little bit anyway off the first phase, I think maybe we should take some of the reserve before we try to get this portion done. And go as far as that money takes us down Gulf Boulevard. I really think, based on what I'm hearing from the other cities, that the money that the county gives, the thirty-five million, is not gonna be able undergrounded. And we're probably gonna have to lobby and go back to the well and ask them after this five years is up, and then we'll explain to them another.
I saw the same problem in Treasure Island. What they were expecting is not what they're able to afford, and it's Duke who's not willing to move. They're not willing to change anything. I don't even know why they would be willing to break this up into four phases. Now, all that does is raises our cost. That means they have other projects they're wanting to satisfy at the same time, and they're wanting their crew to bounce around. They need to come here and work and just be prepared to knock out either the north or the south.
You know, the south is the most, for the money we have, we probably have to, let's see. If we can get this number back down to the million that she gave initially, or one point one, and we're like one point eight probably for the first phase, we probably have to take four hundred thousand in our reserves, but we'll get that reimbursed from the county. Cause we're gonna get another nine hundred thousand.
So it's very, we're loaning them money to complete our project.
Well, what's happening is, that money from the county, the one point three million, yes, we have to go spend it, but the reimbursement is within thirty days, so, you know, we did that with the other projects. So we aren't really on the book for anything, because we get reimbursed quite fast.
I mean, I'm looking at this, we're negotiating by ourselves with Duke. And this project includes other cities along the beach as well?
Yeah, they.
Why can't we be negotiating as a team, all of us versus them?
We tried that, and when the thing came back, Duke's number came back to like four, five, or six million. They even hired consultants. If we were to try the county to just do it for us, and that didn't work.
Well, and if you do that, then they're gonna wanna group rate on their franchise fee.
So what happened was, we went, all the cities were given, they had the money for each city, like Pars was three million, Beller Shore was twenty-one million, Indian Rocks was, I think, four or five million. And I could send you that list of how much it was, but it's being paid to us over five years. The first year, they gave us like four hundred thousand. This year, they gave us nine hundred and seven thousand. So Beller Shore, Beller Beach together, it's nine hundred and seven thousand. And then October first, we'll get another nine hundred, and then the next two years, we get nine hundred and four, so.
So you already had numbers in your mind where we should just create a different rule?
I think we go as far as we can, and when the county money runs out, then we hope for as many to happen to finish.
So we talked about this in the advisory committee. I had some questions that I wanted some calculations on. Were you able to get that information? I don't know, but it can't work, so we get into about the, maybe we call it the perfect foot price along Gulf Boulevard, and how does that break down between the two cities, and who's paying what share? So we make sure that everyone's, it's being, for the shortfall being paid properly.
Oh, okay. We're talking about the previous one.
The whole frontage of Gulf Boulevard, and how much came from Beller Shore, how much came from Beller Beach? What's the shortfall, everyone paid their share?
Well, in my memory, based on what I know from the previous project, we got Beller Shore's money. It took crosswires, and the cost to take their stuff down from the other side was less than the money that they were.
Right, but if we have a hundred feet of frontage of Gulf Boulevard, doesn't matter. And Beller Shore is on the west side, we're on the other side, we're defining Gulf Boulevard, fifty-fifty, doesn't matter what cross did, they were getting the services from that crossing. It wasn't, we didn't benefit from it, they did, plus all the lines that came down from there. So, you know, I think there's a, there's a calculation there that we're missing. That if there's a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall, there may be an opportunity that they might be responsible for some of that, if we actually took the entire stretch of Gulf Boulevard and looked at how many funds, how much we collected.
And how much we spent on that side.
And how much we spent. It just, it doesn't matter which side it is, because we all are benefit, right? How many, how many feet, how many linear feet does Beller Shore's stretch along Gulf Boulevard? What's the entire project cost?
That's how the money is broken up by this stretch.
That's how, is that how the county came up with their formula?
But my point is, we have a shortfall, we can't complete the project. And you're asking us to spend all of our money, and I just wanna make sure that if we agree to drop another five hundred thousand dollars, or whatever that dollar amount is, that we know for sure that we're the ones responsible. There could be some responsibility from Beller Shore's, and I don't wanna open this can of worms, but I'm just saying, I need to know in my mind for sure. So I'd like to see the entire, and I asked you this before, the entire budget for the whole thing. How much money have we gotten so far? How much money can we expect to get from Beller Shore's and Beller Beach, you know?
So what you're saying is, on the south side, should the project should have been a fifty-fifty?
Right, or, yeah, exactly.
Because that's where everybody, both sides, is ending the entire spend.
What about the argument of how many houses on the west side compared to the east side?
Gulf Boulevard, beautification, or just the lines off of it.
If there's only forty houses on the east-west side, and there's eighty houses on the east side.
Well, because they're not doing anything with the lines that are feeding the homes. They're only doing the main lines on Gulf Boulevard.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, it all goes there, and not with residency.
So basically, the portion of Gulf Boulevard where we interface, fifty-fifty, that makes sense. It should be fifty-fifty both ways, and then where Beller Shore, you go north.
You divide by the square foot.
Well, okay, now, I will say this, that they, whenever Duke is quoting these projects, they look at what side of the street, and they, the number of drops and things like that. I do, that's why they're not willing to bend much whenever they're. You may not like where they're going to put one of those pedestals or transformers on the ground, but they're not willing to give much. They're not willing to move things around to accommodate. They're very strict on their costing. And I found that out whenever I was speaking to a guy down in Treasure Island.
It's hard to.
I'm just curious. I mean, I'd like to see, I know, and maybe I'm way off base on this, but, I mean, I just, that's why I wanna talk a little more about it. So, you know.
I'll pull the original agreement. But the original agreement, I don't remember what there was, or what you put, five years ago.
I know, none of us can remember all those.
But they gave us all the money that they received.
Everything they got, but they didn't pay.
You think that's more than what it would have actually cost them to their part?
Yeah, cause they don't, well, you gotta look at it. They, they're giving us a million here, plus whatever they gave us last time.
You're just talking about the south, south of the line at this point, right?
No, no, I'm talking about.
All of it.
All of it.
Well, you said South of Bosway Boulevard is the next project you're working on, right?
Yeah.
I've got two related questions. There's still some crosswires in the process. Most of those are already.
Paid for to be gone. That's spectrum.
But we don't seem to have any leverage. We paid for this stuff, and it just sits there, and sits there, and sits there. Is there any leverage we can have to check that in?
I went to hire up there, and then two or three things happened. But part of the problem spectrum right now is, I think I'm on my third superintendent for the last three years, and all of a sudden, it's gone.
So I have a follow-up question to have. Some of those crosswires, if you look on that west side, there are poles there where the lights are.
Those will stay.
Those will stay, because they're personal property of Beller Shore?
No, they're the street lights.
They're provided by Duke, right?
Yeah.
So what was your first question?
County contracts for those, is that right?
We pay for our side.
They pay for theirs.
Yeah, crosswires, or crossways. And the vast majority of them are gone. The few onesies, twosies that are left are owned by the cable company. We paid upfront to have these things removed, and they're still languageable.
Is that an illegal request perhaps? Should that be a legal request by the city manager or something? Well, the utilities are tough nuts to give.
Well, do you remember BEI? Well, it was, it was a blast thing. They didn't do anything while everything was being dug out and plunked and all that. They waited until the end.
But is it, is it time for a strong letter to the Public Utilities Commission?
They are controlled by public utilities.
So FCC, who? I mean, a letter to somebody, and/or is there some way to?
I tried to have FCC on Frontier, and you know what? It got me nowhere, because they're out of control.
I can tell you right now, the wire, the cable wire coming into my house is directly there. There's no conduit around it or anything. They completely trashed my house, and because they did all the undergrounding over a weekend or something, I came back and had the letter, the television, made a phone call, they sent a kid out with some kind of a tool, and he underground trashed a wire, and to this day, I still have an orange wire running down the side of my house. At least I have cable.
You have, that's what you're dealing with.
There's no way of using the performance.
Seemingly, I do. I did.
So you're going to contact Duke and see if you can?
I've already talked to him. She's coming back to me.
You're waiting on that, and then you're also going to look into, just to make sure everything's fair?
Yeah.
And was there, did you have any other questions from us?
No, I just, you know, what I wanted to ask is if consensus to go ahead and go as far as you can.
Cause they're saying this bid is only good for six months, right?
Well, I'll be arguing that point with them.
Maybe more to get them to even do anything for six months.
Yeah, but we had very, for the most part, with Mark Porter from Utility himself, did the undergrounding. I, for the most part, I mean, I think he did a really good job, and he was willing to come back. There were a couple issues where I guess he did two lines, he came back and repaired that, so.
I think we all agree that we want this done. We just wanna make sure we're not wanting everything to get done.
No, no, that's, well, my intent is just to try to get as far as we can.
Everybody okay with that?
I agree with you, though. I mean, I'd really like to make sure that Beller Shore, the other hand, would use their fines.
Right.
Yeah, cause some of the money that was spent for, you built Boulevard, you spent for Park, it was spent for Marina, it was spent for bicycle racks, for each thing, that money was spent with some of that. Built Boulevard, that's that.
Not for, not for, for.
Okay, so I tried to commit to a nine P M, hard cut, but I felt like this was pretty important to discuss this. And I think it was a great meeting, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Everyone?